All right. All right, I'm gonna go ahead and call us to order. Well, now, this is fancy. A new attendance. Had always been there? Oh, I've never seen it before. Okay, well, that's pretty cool. Um, thank you all for being here. This is obviously our June work, July work session, preparing for August board meeting. Seeing, uh, no other reason to wait. Mr. LaConan, would you like to fill us in on finance?
I'd love to. Good evening. We have attached the end of June preliminary financials. They're preliminary because we will have to put back July's payroll for our ten-month contracts. And we will also have to put back our accounts payable journal entries. Um, additionally, we will have some, uh, accounts receivable, but it will not be enough to kinda outweigh this. So, as of right now, you can see we're above an eight million dollar surplus. That's gonna get chewed up. It's probably gonna come down, I expect, to around one to two million dollars, but still in the surplus range. I'm gonna back away from the mic a little bit. It's coming in hot, a little screechy. I think it's the french fries. Um, but anyways, additionally, I got our sales tax numbers, uh, just today, and we surpassed twenty-six million dollars. We got twenty-six point two million dollars originally when I was, was planning and budgeted for next year. I had only budgeted twenty-six million dollars. So, it shows that that's an attainable number if things stay constant with our economy here locally and sales tax. We also met our property tax revenue goal and many other goals. Uh, but, like I said, two payrolls, uh, that's a, those are large numbers that you can expect. We, we've already done one of those entries today, and it was two point six million dollars, two point five million dollars. So, around two and a half million dollars. We have one more of those to do, and, um, any base, any services that were provided to us in June that we're just now getting the invoices in July, we'll have to put those back. So, those are things that are not, not accounted for on these financials. That's why it's called a preliminary. Uh, we have to close the books by August thirty-first. Uh, we will be closed well before then. I expect we'll probably be closed by the first week in August. That's our timeline right now, uh, so that we can get all of our accounts receivable and accounts payable and payroll accrued, finished and entered onto the books. So, you can expect this number to change, but we will actually re-present these financials after we make all of the entries and, uh, let you know where we're at as far as our surplus. And I'm happy to answer any questions as well.
On, on the revenue side, there's a couple of line items, um, like BEP line item, one point four million, um, lacking compared to what we budgeted for, and then just two line items down, the other state education funds, one point four million. Is there?
I have one more payment. It's an accounts receivable entry, so, so we'll receive our, our final BEP. I actually got, uh, an Excel document of that. Um, I wanna say it was Friday night, last Friday night, so we have one more payment coming that'll be added for BEP. And, uh, early childhood education, uh, were you pointing that line item out? That one is...
No, the very next one, other state education.
Oh, the summer grants, okay. Yeah, those I, I expect a, accounts receivable entry for as well. So, we have to submit reimbursements in E-Plan for those grant line items. So, we take care of expenditures, we submit those, we submit the budget, and they send us the money. So, that is out for reimbursement.
So, are you, are you thinking those revenues are gonna pretty much offset of what expenditures are still out there?
No. It, the expenditures are more than going to, uh, surpass the revenue that we get in. So, basically, what these are, you know, the BEP, that's an accounts receivable entry. It's something for June that we're, we have to count in that set of books, but we don't get notified of the amount and given the amount until July. It's the one time per year in which the county government or county school system accounts for things on an accrual basis. So, we put those back in the month that they were earned, in the month of June. So, BEP, you know, that one payment, it, it will be, um, a, a pretty large payment, uh, but there's also growth money in there. So, I expect to just get above the sixty point eight. I expect to get right around sixty-one, cuz we had a growth payment back in the, uh, back in January. Um, so, I expect to get about sixty-one million in there. Um, but, like I said, that is only, what is that, one point six million? One payroll is two and a half. So, I, I expect the, the accrued payroll to be about five million, and then AP entries, which are services and products that we were received in June but didn't get billed for until July. So, I can, I factor in an amount for that. I, I don't expect that to be nearly as high, maybe at half a million at most. So, so about five and a half million in expenditures still to come in, and I would probably say maybe around one or two million. I'd, I'd probably say around two million in revenues to come in.
So, just guessing, and, and I know I'm putting you on the spot, but guessing, uh, what this document shows is eight point eight million dollar, uh, addition to fund balances, but you think it may be more closer to five million dollars?
Yeah, I think the three to five, but, but, you know, we'll, we'll actually be able to give you the answer real shortly, so.
Don't see any other lights. Mr. LaConan, could you just give us a status update? I think everybody's probably aware of all this, but status update on the budget.
The commission voted to override, uh, Mayor Ogle's veto last night. So, as of that vote, we have a budget. Uh, we have finalized the notice and reaching out to the paper first thing tomorrow morning. So, they'll get it in the paper as quick as possible. We have to let that run for ten days in, so that the public can see it. They can also come and speak on it if they'd like at, at the next full commission meeting. Uh, the commission has talked about having a special-called full commission meeting, uh, the first week of August, if we can get those ten days in the paper completed. And then there will be resolutions for the borrowing of capital funds and also to ratify the budget. Once the budget is ratified, it will be sent off to the State Comptroller's Office for approval. Vacation is an administrative duty that the commission has to do. It, it's, it's kinda like a course of action you just have to take. It's, it's not a sealing, binding vote. That has already occurred. So, by overriding the veto, they have accepted the budget that, the last budget that we sent and the budget that they originally proposed to the commission in past.
Thank you very much. All right, I don't see any other lights. Thank you for that report. Moving on to instruction. Uh, first thing I have is CTE jobs for CN graduates, MOU. Amy Roberts' name's on it. Okay.
All right, I'm, I'm green now, right?
Yeah, there you go.
Green, good to go. All right, uh, pardon me for that. Uh, so, I have the MOU in front of me now, um, and I did not bring my glasses, so I'll struggle through this, making the font bigger. How big, how much power? Yeah, those work, thank you. We've been in ti, new teacher or, uh, orientation the last two days, and my hall, uh, glasses stayed in my office, and I just didn't get them. Uh, so, I will read to you what this MOU or MOA says, but, uh, that is, uh, between the JTG program and Murray County Schools for the coming school year. Staff members are responsible for conducting the Jobs for America's Graduates in, in Columbia Central High School, Mount Pleasant High School, available for the requested training and development activities as part of the commitment to the fidelity of the, of the model. Uh, it makes its best effort, or makes a best effort to work with JTG to secure the resources needed to sustain the Jobs for America's Graduates Program in the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, uh, from either or both the internal or external sources, working in close cooperation with JTG. In turn, the JTG provide, uh, pre-service and in-service training, the delivery of the whole Jobs for America's Graduates National Curriculum, the implementation of the Jobs for America's Graduate Research and Tracking System. Uh, that is an electronic tracking system. It is ongoing. It's in troubleshooting to help assure the highest levels of implementation that are consistent with the process and outcomes that are standards for the high school model for the Jobs for America Graduates Program. It is understood that the JTG may withdraw if we do not supply the, our, our side of the agreement. Uh, throughout, through state investment and private foundations and grants, JTG will employ specialists at Columbia Central High School and Mount Pleasant High School. Murray County Schools will invest ten thousand dollars per school for a total of twenty thousand dollars. Uh, it is with good faith and understanding that Murray County's Schools' investment will be twenty-five thousand, uh, twelve thousand five hundred per school, uh, in twenty-two, twenty-three. Uh, and then that will increase, uh, in the years twenty-three and twenty-four, uh, where we will increase to fifteen thousand dollars per school for a total of thirty thousand dollars. Uh, so, that is the agreement, uh, or at least what is in place for us to agree to. And it, it is, it is also my understanding from having worked with JTG in the past, uh, that the, this is a curriculum for students in, in both of those schools, where, where they take classes and they learn things about, uh, how to get a job, how to write resumes, how to do interviews, all of those types of things that one would normally associate with, uh, moving from an educational setting to a workplace setting. I, I, I'm sorry, I, I can't hear you very well.
Are they, have this already been budgeted?
It, it's my understanding that it has through the CTE program, yes, ma'am.
Any other comments, questions? Are we good? Do we wanna do this on consent, or? Okay, consent agenda it is. Thank you very much.
You're welcome, thank you.
Who wants a special ed? All right.
Uh, procedural safeguard parental right that parents have through IDEA is to request an independent evaluation at a pub, at the public's expense. We have, um, we give a list of private agencies that we trust to conduct that for us when a parent requests that. Um, Project Play is one of those agencies, and they've requested a contractor into a contract so they can receive their payment. Um, the contract is very standard, um, so, if you have any questions.
Otherwise, I'm gonna call y'all on the every time. Okay. Uh, any questions or comments on this? Move it to consent? Thank you very much. Uh, next, it just says instruction update. Do you have any update? Other than what we have in front of us?
Do we wanna speak to the, uh, to the bid proposal that is...
Yeah, we'll go to that, yeah. Let's move on then to the bid.
Okay, I'm gonna depend on Dr. Pennell to help me with this. Um, there, there were some agreements, uh, that were in place prior to the, the recent transitions of, of staff members, including myself. Um, and some quotes came in, some quotes were changed, some funding sources may have been changed. So, we, on seven eighteen, we submitted a request, uh, to be able to purchase, uh, the I Ready program for a total of two hundred and seventy-three thousand four hundred and eleven dollars uh, to come from Esser Funding. Make sure I'm right on that. Um, and thi, this program, you do have all of the attachments, uh, in that bid process, uh, but these will include site license for students throughout the district for supplemental intervention programs in gra, grades K through eight, uh, in addition to the adopted ELA curriculum for wonders, grades K through five, and the service, uh, ELA curriculum for grades six through twelve. And I'll let Dr. Pennell, uh, comment if she has anything else.
Any questions?
Are there any questions regarding this bid? Okay, seeing none, we'll move it on to, uh, consent. And the next one is the Speech Language Learning Center. Welcome back.
Um, that is ours again. This is a yearly contract we bring back before you. Um, the Speech Language Learning Center offers, um, speech language therapy to our students with staff shortages, and they also provide, um, the fee-for-service model, um, where they bill, um, Medicaid and get, they get reimbursed for that, um, at no, at no cost, but at administrative fee to us. And then they also provide coverages for things like maternity leave. So, this is our standard yearly contract that we enter in with Speech Language Learning Center.
It is, thank you very much. Operations.
Good evening. First thing, I don't have a, a formal update for you tonight posted. I was just gonna give you the verbal. We are counting down until Monday, uh, or Tuesday, when teachers come back in the building. We currently, if you've not seen pictures of Hampshire's gym, that floor's been completely done. I have, um, Santa Fe's up right now. They're painting it as we speak, uh, and it should be done within the next two days and moved on to Mount Pleasant. From there, we go to Calioka and then EA Cox, and that will wrap up rather quickly. Um, the three buildings that we have done the most extensive work in, Mount Pleasant Elementary, Riverside, and Spring Hill Elementary currently, currently look like train wrecks. They are in the process of being cleaned up, train wrecks, though. Uh, Mount Pleasant Elementary has a lot of dust from a probably forty-year-old, um, insulation that we found in the ceiling when the ceilings came down. I was down there today, and they, they're running three crews in there day and night to get it under control and assure me it will be ready. Uh, Riverside is a little bit our most pressing on our timeline, but, uh, we will have it ready because it is not a, a huge building, and we feel like we can get it knocked out. So, a lot of coordinating effort going on right now as, as we go through time. Uh, athletes are back, dead period's over, and if you've been by our fields right now, they are a bustle with football helmets, uh, soccer kids running and different things like that. So, that's our update, just, just trying to finish up and get everybody ready for next week. Capital reports, um, report is just your update on where we've been with pro, uh, cost. Train report is there. It pretty much echoes the timeline that we have. Please know that those three buildings, we are not through with them. We have done all of the, the dirty work, the deep internal work to lay the foundation now as the fall starts. Train will be going into those buildings and pulling individual units and, and, uh, replacing them. The wiring's done, everything's ready just for them to do that. They'll do that at night, they'll do that on the weekends and on fall break. We've got a good schedule for that. No one will be without. Uh, if so, we had an issue last year at Santa Fe where we had two rooms for about a week that were without. We put window units and mobile units in them and got them going. Uh, in fact, those teachers asked us not to come get their window units, uh, when we got back up and running. So, we've got a plan. If anything happens, we should be good to go from there. Item three-three-three, I was asked to, to put this on the, the agenda tonight. It's just a discussion on bus discipline. I think Mr. Lindsey talked to several, uh, bus drivers wanted it brought up. Mr. Richie is here. He and I have talked about this, and we're just opening this up for you guys. It was asked for us to put this on here.
Okay, Mr. Lindsey, I'll turn it to you.
I, I had one particular bus driver reach out to me, uh, but it's, um, something that I hear over and over, concern that, uh, that bus drivers have is, is when there's a discipline issue on the bus, they feel like they have no say, um, in the corrective action on that. Um, that they, and, and as I looked up, uh, policy that, that, um, coincides with, with bus conduct, it gives that, most people probably don't know this, but our policy gives that bus driver the ability to remove someone from the bus immediately, as long as that kid is safe. If he's disrupted, he or she's disrupted to the point that you have to pull over on the side of the road and get the kid off, you can do that. Uh, but, the, the issue that they have, or that I hear, is that they have, um, child A that is continuously a problem on the bus, that they, they turn that into, to the school administrator, um, and they don't feel like they, they get a lot of say in that. Um, and, and I understand where they're coming from. I had a bus driver tell me, he said, you know, what's, what's the worst thing that can happen if a kid's disrupting, um, a classroom? He's, you know, other kids miss something, that they don't, uh, their, their learning is, is disruptive. He, he said, what's the worst thing can happen when I have a kid that's being disrupted on the bus? And he said, I wreck the bus and kill everybody on it. And, and that, that's, that's an extreme case, but, but there is a lot of truth in that. So, um, I, I told this bus driver, I would ask to, to bring this before the board, so I, I'm doing what, uh, I, I told him I would do. Um, but I do see some validity in his concern, and, um, would just like to explore how, uh, we could give them some say in, in what goes on, on their bus.
Now I'm on, thank you. Uh, if I may, Mr. Perryman?
Go ahead.
Um, you're exactly correct. With our new student code of conduct, any, um, bus infraction would be considered a level three-hundred offense. And of course, there's a, a lot of options that can occur, uh, with that particular offense. Now, with the student code of conduct, we were very specific with throwing items off the bus because there have been problems with that. So, we were very specific with that identifier, but any type of bus discipline action would be considered a level three-hundred offense. I truly believe, as being vice principal not too long ago at Spring Hill High School, I, I truly believe that a lot of the issues are procedural, um, in terms of communication with the school administrators. I, I know many best practices throughout the district with, with some vice principals and even principals. They give the bus driver their cellphone number, which I did, and several other APs do, emails, et cetera. One of my biggest frustrations is oftentimes, an administrator may not know about the incident, provided it's not totally, truly severe, but kind of a repeat offense... provided it's not totally truly severe, but kind of a repeat offense or what have you. Sometimes they get turned into the front office and may not even end up in the administrator's mailbox until sometimes a week later. And it's, it's so hard to go back and look into it and all that sort of thing because so much time has lapsed. So one thing that I do hope to do, uh, during those administrative workshops for truancy and discipline in, in August, is to work on those procedures and those communication, uh, avenues for, for more direct responses. That's critical whenever there's a, a bus incident. And I know, and I, and I maybe, I'll speak for, for Eric as well, but anytime my office receives a, a phone call, uh, from an angry parent while their, while their child was kicked off a bus for a period of time, uh, it's an easy conversation. Because anytime there's, there's safety, uh, questioned, uh, it will always trump a, a parent complaint. Um, we will never put the safety of children, uh, first over a parent complaint. Um, so just, just know that. But I, I truly think once we, uh, streamline procedures and that, I, I think that will help address some of those bus concerns. Um, another thing too, that I want to, uh, try to, uh, instill in bus drivers and administrators is really a, a, a bus is no different than a classroom. I- i- it's not. Um, you have bus management just like you have classroom management. So we hope to improve upon that. Um, and then, uh, in terms of those procedures, whenever, uh, an administrator implements a, um, the loss of the privilege of riding a bus, which is what it is, uh, oftentimes they'll just give me a heads up and they'll say, hey, a parent may contact your office, but I had to remove a student from a bus for, for a period of time. And I said, okay, no problem. And it, it's usually not an issue. But I think once we iron down the procedures, I think that'll help tremendously.
Can I, can I say from a different perspective? And, and I had the building level perspective of bus discipline's easy. The book says you do this and you do this. From the transportation supervisor perspective, and this is gonna step on toes, weak administrators don't discipline. Straight up. Bus drivers can tell you who to turn a kid into to get results and they can tell you who's not gonna do anything. That's, that hurts people. I can tell you which schools do not discipline buses. They are consistent, they are consistent, I will give them that. Um, but they, there are schools that let lots of things go. Mr. Richie this year wrote in, the throwing the items from the, the bus window into code for us. We've been for about four years now, five years, issuing, issuing revocation of services letters from the bus garage. It was not a discipline because the bus garage is, aren't the disciplinarians, but it was a, we're revoking your service. I'll give you an example. This is the ultimate extreme example, but this was one that I lived out. We had a gentleman from Dixon go to Columbia Chrysler Dodge, bought a brand-new twenty-five-hundred Dodge Ram. He drove from Columbia Chrysler Dodge out in industrial park going to Highway seven. He met bus ninety-two. A student stood up and threw a full can of Pepsi and busted his windshield as they passed them. The school administrator told me that it was this child's first discipline infraction and that was a warning. That's a life safety issue, not just for the person in the car, for the people behind them, for the driver who hears this, sees this, looks up, and at anywhere from thirty to fifty-five miles an hour, bus ninety-two picks up, uh, Countryside Village. The middle school bus drops off roughly seventy-two to seventy-five kids at one stop. We put the child off of the bus and, and said, this is not a, this is not a punishment. This is just, you don't get to ride. We've done that for a while. We've had computers thrown out at people walking down the road. Uh, lots of things where people said, well, it's the first time they've had an infraction, we're just not gonna discipline. It's a warning. So I will tell you that the most inconsistent thing to bus drivers are inconsistencies across our district as far as how people discipline. That would apply to discipline within the building as well. From a, from the supervisor point of view also, it was a constant conversation. Mr. Richie did mention something is very, very true. We have drivers who put up with something, 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 turn it in. Doesn't seem like that big of a deal if you're not on the bus. You meet with the child, you issue a warning, you call home, they lose their minds and say, well, he's been doing it for a month. So our constant conversation with bus drivers is, if it is something that is disruptive and it is something that breaks rules, you address that immediately so we don't run into those types of issues down the road. But I will say, and I see this, and I, and I say that about weak administrators, there are very good administrators who discipline very well. We have sometimes bus issues that are much more difficult to deal with than you can imagine. Um, and it is a little bit different from a classroom because it's a forty-foot tube with somewhere from twenty to, to sixty-five to seventy people on it that's moving down the road. And if your child in the backseat drives you crazy, you imagine what that is going down the road from behind. So we, we stay on drivers constantly. I do think Mr. Richie is very diligent in talking to administrators. One of the biggest things, Mr. Lindsay, beyond those two things that I've mentioned, is the communication. I ask every school, and, and I can't force them to do this because I don't control their administrative staffs, the schools that have an administrator on the bus ramp and the administrator who's going to do the bus discipline have very few bus problems. The schools who rotate teachers, or sometimes you have to call because there's no one there, have lots of problems. And I see that across the district. The importance that they put on something is how they do deal with it. And so it's just a constant conversation between the school, between the, the garage. And what I would say, I always stress to my drivers, if there's a problem with the school, you let me handle it. And I stress to principals, if there's a problem with the driver, come to me and let me handle it if you can't work it out. But communication, and sometimes the biggest thing, and I think Mr. Richie will say from experience, is you may have a situation as an administrator where a child has done something and you have information that the bus driver may not. It may be a special needs child, it may be a circumstance where the district has had something in play. We don't get good communication to our drivers from administrators always coming and saying, trust me, I'm working on this. Just give me a little time, let me step in and do something else. Not just always throwing a child off the bus, but let me help with a C E chart, let me help with a, a contact to the parent. So I think communication's the biggest thing, but it is a constant communication from Mr. Richie talking to admin and Mr. Pinkston's conversation with drivers is the only thing that can solve that back and forth.
Let me, uh, jump in here. Uh, you're gonna be next, Mr. Howard. I'm gonna ask you a question real quick. When it comes to throwing things out the window, are there criminal implications for that potentially?
I mean, potentially, I mean, you're looking at the possibility of vandalism. Um, I mean, you'd have to prove some intent on certain things, but yeah, I mean, there could definitely be criminal.
All right, I'll turn it over to, to you for your question or your comments.
So, uh, help me understand the process currently. So, uh, I'm the bus driver. Um, Mr. Lindsay, Mr. Hooper are, are my students. And, you know, they do something. He, he, he throws something out the window and hits something and, and he's just fighting with somebody. So what do I do? I'm a bus driver, wha- wha- how do I report this to, um, Mr. Perryman will be my administrator? How do I, how do I, how do I, how do I do this? Do I just email him? Do I call him? What do I do? Does there a piece of paper?
There's a form that's issued through the transportation department.
Okay.
That's an occurrence form.
And, and is it?
That you're asked to fill out and give to the, the primary, hopefully the administrator on the bus ramp, but most of the time it would be, it's not always, it's a teacher, but report it to the school with the understanding that person will push it forward. There are some admin that give phone numbers out. Few admin that give phone numbers out. Uh, but primarily, they are supposed to have that occurrence form. If they, if they choose, if it's something that's after a route, because let's say you're dropping off middle school, you gotta go get elementary, they'll fill it out during the day, take it back that afternoon. Generally, the office or someone will make a copy for them if they need for their records, and then they turn it in.
So it's just a single form? It's not in duplicate or triplicate or anything?
Triplicate, it's triplicate.
It's triplicate? Okay. So I could take off a copy and then give the other copies to whoever?
Correct. One, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
One, one form goes back to the bus driver once the administrator does their part. And then another one goes to the discipline clerk, and then the other one goes home to the parent regarding.
Two different forms. The driver has a form they're supposed to turn in for the occurrence.
Okay.
The administrator has a triplicate form that they fill out and then distribute accordingly.
So one goes back to the bus driver, so they can understand.
It's actually a four-layer form.
Okay. So, not that I wanna add to or anything, but maybe we should look at changing our policies and procedures, maybe a program. Uh, i- if, if we can look at a program that that bus driver can document it and then we can see exactly what Mr. Lindsay done, cause it's, it's documented in here. He, he's done this, 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 and this, and it's documented right there in a, in a computer program. And we can see what, you know, he, the bus driver's gonna click, you know, he did this, 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 or this. Well, that'll pretty, we can categorize it with the student, um, conduct, and we all know exactly what's going on. And then honestly, with the feedback that can go back into, the administrator can log in and, and see this, or they're sending an email, or I don't know, they're notified somehow. And they get like instantaneous, like you know that, Mr. Perryman, I have done this, it goes to him. And we can obviously with admin, you know, with admin, log at that, look at that and say, huh. I see that Mr. Perryman, he's on, he's on task, he's taking care of these, he's, he's matching up punishment with the way it should. Uh, Mr. Luke Conan, this other administrator over here, he's not doing the discipline. He's not matching things up. I don't know. It just sounds like there's communication issues and I hate to add another layer, another program for, for administrators to have to use and log into, but it just, from a higher level perspective, it would give us an exact clear picture of what's happening on the buses and how our policies are being. And honestly, it may be something that we might wanna do on a school level, um, because that way we would, we would know precisely, how effective is our new procedures? Are they working or are they not working? I don't know, just a thought.
Well, I do, I'm sorry. Uh, with this new comput- uh, communication app that Mr. Cobb's implementing this coming school year, I was really on board with it because it can be set up to where bus drivers can set up their buses, just like a teacher can set up their classroom. And that would include parent communication, like if the bus is running late, they can send a message to the parents. So hopefully that can be used for that same aspect there. Um, one thing we did implement in the policy too is for those infractions that might happen like the last week of school or something, you suspend them to the end of the school year. It's not much of a punishment, obviously. We in policy put that a, a student can lose their bus privileges for up to a one hundred and eighty school days. So that can carry well into the next year, so.
Note, one thing, a bus driver cannot operate an electronic device. It is a felony for them to do that while they are on the bus unless the bus is stopped in an emergency situ-
I don't mean immediately, but.
I know, but, but, but just so you know, they, they can't, they can't do a notification, hey, we're running late because it's, it's a, it's a big problem.
I don't know how we get this cat skint, but my, my goal in this is we're losing bus drivers just the, the same way we're losing teachers. And, and if you talk to people, they don't mind driving a bus, they don't, the, the, and I've even had bus drivers tell me, pay's not an issue, but I just can't deal with what I have to deal with. And, and, and then to go a step further with that, um, not just that, that they have a general concern of what happens when I'm distracted and, you know, I have to live with the fact that I, I was operating a bus that a kid wound up hurt on, or, or, or worse. So, um, I, I just, it, the feedback I get is exactly what you said, Mr. Perryman, that, um, I, I'm not one to beat around the bush and, and that's, it boils down to that a lot of administrators don't do what they're supposed to do. Um, it's out of sight, out of mind, it's happening on a bus, so it's, it's not something that they're, uh, very worried about. Um, and, and, and we're losing, and we're going, going to continue to lose bus drivers because of it. Uh, until we can, um, fix it somehow, uh, then, um, it's going to continue. And, and part of the problem I hear is, um, you know, that the, you have this form you fill out, you turn it in, and you go for days and don't hear anything. You have no idea if any, anything's been done. And then sometimes when you do hear, it's, you know, there's an excuse that, uh, you know, you don't understand, blah, blah. But the bottom line is, a- a- as you said, Mr. Perryman, it's a forty-foot tube going down the road at sixty miles an hour. Oh, that, the, the consequences of distraction i- is, is great at that point. And I'm, I would be in favor of going above and beyond or, or i- if we have to rewrite part of the student code of conduct to, to make bus behavior even specific because, um, one, that, uh, w- we have to give our bus drivers some backing. And secondly, um, you know, it, it, it gonna be a really bad day when, when, when there's a, a fatal accident. So, uh, what, I, I'm open to anything. I don't have the answers, but, but I, we just can't continue to operate the way we've been operating in my opinion.
Um, I guess this question will be for Mr. Perryman and for Mr. Stacy. With what you said, Mr. Perryman, about knowing that there are administrators that aren't gonna do what they're supposed to, are we putting that into evaluations for administrators so that when we are evaluating administrators, we're not just looking at what they're doing inside the building, but also how they're handling bus safety and, and those type of, those type of issues?
Look at the team evaluation, which principals and assistant principals are evaluating on the administrative rubric. It's a very small portion. Uh, it doesn't really address that specifically. It more addresses just operations. Team evaluation is pretty much thrown towards instruction and the instruction in the building being the instructional leader, the term we hear quite often. Um, conversations do occur, but as far as the formal evaluation, even if you noted it as an operational management of the building, it's, it's a very small portion of that rubric that doesn't really change much of the evaluation. Is that fair enough to say? State, I mean, we can, we can do outside of that as far as a, a performance and specific performance. We had conversations with principals constantly about things outside of that, but their formal evaluation is pretty much for principals and APs is a, is an instructional-based type thing.
Gotta get used to these new microphones. Um, I mean, it sounds like you guys have the solutions or, or at least have a, a process for this. I just wanna make sure we, I mean, the board seems to be making it pretty clear where we feel we are. It sounds like you guys know where you need to be. I would just ask that we communicate that with both administrators and school bus drivers, especially the school bus drivers, because I really think they need to, and it's something we've talked about with the, the discipline process, process for teachers as well. There's a big piece of this to make sure they understand what their pro- part of the process is so they can have some comfort knowing that if this happens, this is exactly what I do. So as, we can just make sure we communicate that to them, you can communicate this to administrators that it's very clear the board wants this to be taken care of appropriately. And especially, we've, we've got some time before school starts here and the buses start running. Seems like this is a pretty easy problem to solve, to me, anyway, um, because we know how to fix it. So if you guys can just make sure you, you put that into procedures, communicate it out, uh, and if people aren't, hate to be harsh on that, but if they're not gonna follow through with that, I just don't see any reason to tolerate that at all.
Mr. Howard?
Just real quick, I, so, as I just threw that out, idea out there of a program that, I just, it, it really makes sense that we should be doing that across the, the entire school system for everything. How, how do we know if an administrator is ineffective? How do we know if that discipline problem, I mean, other than, you know, there's a discipline problem there? But how, how do we document that? I would really like to look into some sort of software that would be able to record that. And like I said, I hate red, I hate to add a layer of red tape, but how do we know if our policies are going to be implemented and the expectation is there? How, how do we have a checks and balance? We don't, we don't. Um, and we, we want, obviously, discipline's very important. Mr. Richie, you spent better part of six months, I believe, working on that discipline policy and changing it. So I, I want it to be successful and I want it to be enforced, and I would just like to know how it's being followed through. I, I think that we have instant, I mean, obviously, if I'm a bus driver and I submit this very serious situation, I need to know that the administrator gets that as soon as possible and that's dealt with as soon as possible. very serious situation, I need to know that the administrator gets that as soon as possible and that's dealt with as soon as possible. From, I mean, I mean, I could obviously go to my boss at the bus garage and just issue a denial of service, but what does that do in the long run? That child has gotten away with something. So, I, I really would like to look into some, I'm not saying we can do it, but just, I would like to look into that, that possibility of having some tracking system with the, it'd be a system of checks and balances.
Yes, sir, and, and we did recently just change, uh, well, we added some codes into synergy dealing with discipline. And a couple of those additions deal with bus discipline. So we will be able to run reports to see what those numbers look like and we can report that back to you throughout the year upon your request, that'd be fine.
Thank you very much. So it feels like we're moving in the right direction on this and we'll keep that at the forefront of our, of our process. Moving on.
The next item we have is a-
No, there's nothing to do. Correct. No, those are just updates. Alright.
Item three point, three point four, I'm only, Mr. Hall speak too, it's an FYI on a TVA energy program that we're going to, uh, participate with the, with your blessing.
This is a program that apparently we had several years ago before I got here. This company bought that, uh, other company, I think it was Inernoc or something like that. Um, and then I think some of the equipment stuff, uh, failed away when we changed some things, so we're really just trying to reinstate some of this and what this is going to allow us to do, which we're in a lot better shape to be able to do this now, since we're already doing it with our, uh, train ensemble software package. So what the TVA's program is, is it's allowing them to put some reading equipment on a, on our electrical panels. And once their demand level gets so high that they're scurrying to try and save their generators and if we can, if they can have participants shut down certain things to reduce their amount of, uh, demand usage. So it's something that, that we're really already doing right now with, with our program, with our train program. Uh, when we go from, uh, uh, occupied to an unoccupied mode in the, in the evenings and on weekends and things like that. So we're already doing that, so all they're going to do is monitor it and if there's savings for us to be able to capture, it's just additional savings that we're going to have, so it's, it's no money, uh, investment on our end. It's just allowing them to go ahead and be able to do that and capture more money if we can get it.
Three point, three point five is the athletic handbook update. We've divided this into three different books, um, just so you know that we will send to you. This is the handbook that will be posted for, uh, the general public to see. We pulled out and have as a separate document the facility standards that you had approved. Uh, and then we also pulled out how we are, uh, supplementing coaches. Push this. And was just pretty lengthy and lots of redundancy, so we provide them procedural that at any point if someone needs them, we can provide and we will provide those to you. The athletic handbook has been through several revisions through Mr. Porter, myself, Ms. Ventura, and has bounced back and forth. Again, it is a procedural document, it doesn't require approval. And because it is a procedural document, it can be changed as needed as issues arise, if something comes up. If it is changed, we will make a note to everyone that it has, there has been a change in the book, so.
Mr. Perryman, I was curious with Facilitron, with our update, updated, um, fee structure going into effect in July, how is that gone for this month?
We, we've cut back.
Okay.
Um, we are currently, um, we had a big discussion this afternoon. The, the biggest thing we found now is that out of county people suddenly have home addresses in Murray County and their business is run out of their home. Uh, and we are, uh, working through how to say, no, your business that is owned and operates in another county, actually, its office is your house. Uh, and so we're fighting through some loophole things that we're finding people chasing us. Uh, and, uh, we're also chasing down some, um, I, I spoke to principals last week at the principal meeting and said, you know, do not promise that you're going to waive fees. Uh, we're still running into some people called and said, hey, the principal said I wasn't going to be charged for this. Uh, and that flies kind of in the face of the conversation we've had. Um, so we, we've been good about notifying people. The folks who truly are using our building and want to use our buildings have been receptive and have been agreeable. We've made some concessions at times with, um, instead of a classroom, um, there was a, a portion of the hallway or of a lobby that could be used and, and we've worked searches and different folks like that. Um, that's been good, not had issues. The biggest issue is just finding really out of county people who suddenly are in county, according to them and, and, you know, we have three years' worth of insurance that suddenly has a change to their home address and, and things like that. So we're working through that, but so far it's, it's been, we really haven't had any negative feedback from anyone.
Okay. Um, one other thing, I know in here there's a budget form, can you walk me through what that process?
Yeah, and Mr. P- and Mr. Porter is actually out of town. The budget form after he left was supposed to be moved to the document where the coaches' forms are.
Okay.
This is just an internal control. What we're trying to do to alleviate circumstances is, is have each individual sport create a budget. Now, we're not holding them to it dollars and cents-wise because if they anticipate a fundraiser, they're gonna, you know, they anticipate five thousand, they take in three thousand, we know the numbers are going to change. But this is an internal control document so that the coach, the AD, the principal are all on the same page as they go through the year. And at different points in the year, we can check where an account is. Is everything okay? Do you have any outstanding balances? And it's just sort of an internal check that we're going to run through them. He has not actually sat down and gone through with all because we've had a lot of coaching changes, we've had a lot of AD changes. In the next two weeks as we return to school, Mr. Porter will sit down with ADs and walk through this process of how they're doing that. This should have been moved to the, to more the financial document where coaches stipends and those things were, uh, but it stayed in here. We, we'll end up moving it, but it's an internal control document.
Okay, but as far as like when you want coaches to return these and things like that, I mean, I, I know now there's been a lot of changeover and things like that, but in the future, I'm assuming we're doing like we do our budget, like this school year, July one to June thirtieth.
If a coach remains, then we know, if a new coach comes in, then they see the budget that the, the outgoing coach had.
Right.
Uh, and, and of course, they have the liberty to change that as a new coach coming in and his priorities come in and money's changed. But yes, he's given them hard dates as to when this is turned in and then there will be a, a periodic check throughout the year as to where we are.
Okay, and then one last thing, I know when we talked about the athletic budget, one of the things that was on there at the bottom was some other options, um, for things that we could do and one of those, one of those things was talking about activity buses. I really think that's something that we've talked about before that I think would be beneficial for our schools, particularly for these co-ops that exist between, um, unit schools going to other schools, but also for smaller sports. I think that could be, that could benefit at all of our schools if we had these. Um, I know I had reached out to Ms. Ventura about it and she was thinking about bus drivers and we don't have enough bus drivers. But if we're talking about activity buses, we're not talking about a bus driver, we're talking about somebody with a license essentially that is approved by us. Um, when we, when we look at the amount of money that we've allocated for athletics, I think if we use part of that, I think it could go a long way towards impacting every school in the county and then we could use the leftover to, to work on some fields and things like that. That's just my thoughts.
So if it's a true activity bus, they do have to be a licensed CDL holder with a class B, a P, and an S. Um, so they would have to have the same requirements. We would also have to have them listed on our insurance as an employee. Um, so that they don't, that doesn't mean that they have to drive, uh, a route every day, but they would have to, um, be one of our drivers to be able to be covered by our insurance, uh, to carry that. Now, we've talked and we talked with you at budget time about things, I know Marshall County does, minivans. And they have things like that where that would be someone that, that is-
When I said bus, I think I may have missed that, then I was thinking more minivan.
A- and, and, and there is an option there because you know, if you are in Rutherford County, if you're in Williamson County, you see the white buses that aren't yellow buses and those are true activity buses that, and they buy them new, the same way they do a bus, they just don't have all of the road features on them. They don't have a stop sign, they don't have red lights, amber lights, that type of thing. They're really just a big bus, it's cheaper to buy them that way, they paint them white. Um, so you can go that route and that is, I know that Williamson does that, Rutherford does that, Sumner does that. Um, smaller places like Marshall do the minivans, some different options, and, and just a fleet vehicle type thing. So there are things that if you wish for us to explore, we can explore that and bring back what the pricing would be on that type of thing. Is that good? Is that okay? We can do that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, going back to the, uh, athletic handbook. So one of the things that has come up is, as I've talked to some parents and that concerns me, I know this is a procedural and it's not board-approved. The concern I have with that, and I guess this would be for anything that's procedural, is I think that the public, i.e. the parent, kind of needs some consistency of what to expect. And it would, it makes me, I, I know I ran into one issue with a parent back, uh, the fall of, uh, the spring of last year where I think we were in some, a point where we didn't really have a handbook in place, we had an older one that was a bit outdated. The concern I had there all along was that the parent was kind of left, you know, we had a publicly posted document, but we're saying that it's not the guiding document, that there's something else at play here. So I guess the only concern I would have is, is what are our procedures to make sure that if we're going to post this on the website, this is what we're going by until we replace it with something else. That would be my main concern, so that there's some consistency, so that if, if I have a question about what goes on at a sport, or any parent does, they can go to that place, look for it. And as long as it's still posted there, that is what we're all going by. So do you guys have some controls in place for that?
So that's why this is with you tonight.
Okay.
Uh, rather than waiting to, up into the school year, because once this goes through, it is an FYI. Unless someone just threw their hands up and screamed, no, this is completely wrong, we're going to go ahead and post this and have this out there. Circumstance we ran into last year, um, it was pulled for lengthy reasons that I, that, that those days are gone and we don't need to pass those again. Uh, but, um, yes, this will be updated, if it is updated. What we will do is something very similar to what we do with, uh, board or policy updates where we'll redline it, we'll red-letter it for a while, have it placed. And then after it's been on there for a little bit, we'll transition it to a, a full document and just run through there. Jack has the ability to note that when the update occurred. So just when, if we go in and we update this document on eight fifteen, when he reposted, he'll put updated eight fifteen. And then folks can go in and find the red line or the red lettering and we'll see the change from there.
Thank you.
So I know this would be better fitted for Mr. Porter, so.
He's on a beach somewhere.
I'm, I'm lucky, lucky him, I wish I was too. Um, so this may be things that can wait till he gets here, but I just, about the handbook for athletics as well, um, I skimmed through it, truthfully, I didn't read every word of it, but, uh, always hear a lot of, you know, back and forth about athletics from all involved. But I do want to ask, when I was skimming through it, and that may be my fault, it appears that over the financial, we might be giving our athletic directors maybe some power without realizing we're giving them power. That's just my first thought on it, because there's a line in there that says, it's on page four to five, that it supervises the purchase in inventory of the equipment. And I just want to make sure that we're not, um, keeping our coaches from being able, especially if they're raising funds, which often happens. I just would like to further inquire about the checks and balances on that, that we're not giving one person too much power. Um, and then too, this is not even anything I saw when skimming, but I have heard feedback from some coaches countywide that perhaps there's going to be a change to the athletic calendar where maybe middle school and high school seasons are going to run more parallel, where they were more overlapped. I'm guessing that's not in here because the feedback I'm receiving is that that, the, especially the unit schools, they're worried about, it could create a lot of problems, you know, for practices and such, especially if their seasons are running parallel, so.
So let me address both of those.
Sure, thank you.
First off, as a principal, when I was a principal, coaches change regularly.
Right.
And not all coaches are suited to manage a budget completely by themselves, especially in cases where we have non-activity coaches. Uh, as, they don't always know the controls, they've not always been through the same training that say a teacher would be through or something like that. Level to purchasing, where that coach can request a purchase order from the bookkeeper. The bookkeeper before issuing it signs off with the athletic director. That, one, the purchase is appropriate because unfortunately, there are times that they're not.
Right.
And two, are there funds available to make that purchase? And it's just a monitor. They sign that and then at most of those schools, it goes to an administrator for the final signature. When the administrator gets it, if the athletic director has signed it, they are assuming that they have, one, taken inventory of anything that would be being bought. We have that, do we need that, is this legitimate? And then two, the bookkeeper and the athletic director's signature signal to the administrator that this account has funds to purchase. And so it's a, it's a checks and balances within the school, because let's take a school like Central that may have twenty head coaches, you may have another thirty assistant coaches that are coming in saying, I need, I need, I need. So there has to be a balance because the bookkeeper can't be the person that keeps up with the money and the inventories, those types of things. The bookkeeper may say, hey, the athletic director has already purchased these things for your two sports. A lot of times that's the things to line fields with, different types of things. So that's an internal control that doesn't necessarily give the AD the squash power to say, oh no, you can't buy that, but it is just the standard to where they say, yes, we don't have this and this is justified until you have the money. That, from an internal control, school by school, that's going to vary a little bit. But that's the purpose in there is that there's a layer to just say, we're not out of money. Okay, so that, that's kind of what, what that's there for.
I can appreciate that, thank you, but I do want to make sure, because I've, you know, we hear a lot, true or not, do we hear a lot?
Yeah, we do too.
So I know you do, so I just want to make sure we're not giving any one person too much power, but, um, um.
And please, and please know that each principal relies on their AD differently.
Right.
That, that's an, that's an in-house, uh, relationship that, that's always going to be different person to person, experience to experience, uh, and, and those things kind of move and are fluid as times go.
Okay, and my last question, this is probably, um, not even really related to this, but it comes to mind as we're talking about athletics. We had given what I think is pretty generous funding to the athletic departments at the schools for things that was going to allow the, uh, maybe the ADs or the administrators opportunities to kind of, um, I hope, put it back into those programs. Do we know, like, will we just let our, our, our administrators of each school decide how that, or is that something that would solely be on the back of the athletic director?
We'll, we'll, no, no, that-
Okay, because that was-
Please remember that board policy states that the principal is the ultimate person in control, so we'll go to that. Let, let me answer your second question from earlier about the seasons. We have talked to schools about, and, and specifically middle schools, about their seasons. Uh, we are running into situations where I'm going to use some, some school A and school B, so I don't hurt anyone's feelings, right?
That's great.
So we may have a baseball program at school A and it's a larger school, they play twenty games and we have five or six of those. We paid that coach a supplement. We have school B that's a small school that pays, plays eight games, cancels four and plays four. The coach at, the coach at school B gets the same supplement as the coach at school A. So as supplements have gone up and as you guys have placed importance on valuing these folks, we're going to hold them accountable. And we're going to hold them accountable to say, you no longer get to say, oh, we can't do this. If you want the money and you want the sport, you got to play.
Okay.
And so we feel that that's fair enough and that we can make concessions and we can work with anybody to get them what they need to do that. But we have a lot of people putting a lot of work in. We had a baseball team two years ago, a middle school baseball team that competed in two games. That coach received the same supplement as coaches who competed in fifteen to twenty-three games. So, so our internal control is not to say we're- So, so our internal control is not to say we're micromanaging, but you're not micromanaging it in a loose way either. So, that, that has been our conversation.
Um, so I wanna circle back. I know we had discussed the minivan idea, and I think that's a great idea. I think that, um, as you think about it, it, it'll take more than, more minivans than we can probably purchase. Uh, I mean, if you just do two, two minivans at each high school, that's, that's ten minivans, and that's not even touching the middle schools. So, I mean, you know, that, that can get, and then that's essentially a team, right? So, I mean, and you've got multiple teams at each high school. So, I like the idea. I wanna explore the idea. Uh, I know your larger teams are gonna take, they're gonna get a school bus anyways, you know, if, if, if there's a driver, if there's a bus available. Uh, but I do wanna explore that idea, that option. Uh, I know I'm, I'm guessing that a minivan on state contract is probably twenty-eight to thirty thousand, twenty, thirty-three thousand, I don't know, something like that. So, I mean, it would be, it'd be an investment upfront, but it, it, it would be a smaller investment as opposed to a ninety-five thousand dollar bus, so, uh, that only certain people can drive. So, I think it's definitely worth looking at. But beyond that, in the meantime, I believe also in our budget, we also have, uh, money for reimbursements uh, for mileage for coaches, um, money that, it's just, it's just for travel. So, that could be for mileage. Uh, that could be to, to rent a school, or, yeah, rent a school bus or, or whatever. So, I mean, there's, there's some provisions available that we have generously made available, uh, in our budget, so that I think that, uh, going forward, we'll, we should have ways to get our students from point A to point B, um, hopefully as efficiently as possible. But I do, I would like to look at the option, and I'm not saying it's gotta come out of this budget. I, I don't, I would like to look at the option though, and say, or maybe we start with this budget, or the two point five million out of athletics, and just get, you know, one at each school or two at each school. I don't know. I'd like to look at that. Thank you.
We, we would encourage, let's say if Cullyoka's going to Richland to play baseball.
Sure.
We encourage the softball team to play on the same day, because if they travel, we can take one bus and travel both at the same time. Most basketball teams travel together. Central doesn't. Girls travel on one bus, boys travel on a separate bus. Uh, that's a cost they choose to incur.
Sure.
Uh, but we, we would at this point, with the resources we have, say, if we can, when we're scheduling AD and coaches, let's be as smart as you can. Um, truthfully, if we had a big bus, we could probably take the soccer team to Richland on the same day, uh, if they could pull off that schedule. Doesn't always work that way, especially with baseball, because they play lots of times in sets, depending on the conferences they're in. Uh, but if possible, let, let's try.
What I was gonna let Ms. Irvin know, I, I too had the same, um, some coaches reach out to me, and just being from a small school, I, I reached out to Mr. Pointer, but if you have any coaches, ask. He said they will work with people with, I mean, if, uh, some of the schools, if a kid walks onto the field, they make the team. And so, uh, you know, there, there is no, uh, tryouts, you know, it's, it's who, who, who can play.
So, specifically, we, we've spoken with Mr. Williams and, and Coach Jones at Hampshire about circumstances and sometimes hardships that can create. We know those. We, we will deal with those on one-on-one, on individual basis. We just don't want folks to make, um, planning decisions right now, saying, "Well, we're not gonna have enough baseball players next spring. We know it, so we're only gonna play this many." So, we wanna, we wanna make sure we're doing right by the kids. One thing we talked about is TMS double A's hosting a lot of year-end, uh, tournaments now. If you're a high school team, you don't get to go into the, to the T double S double A year going, "You know, if we're not good, we're not gonna play." Um, and there, there are football teams that make postseason and have two to three wins. They gotta play. So, if you're a middle school team, and we're paying supplements that on the same range are comparable to high schools for what's expected and the number of games played, then that should be an expectation too. We had a really good volleyball team last year, probably a volleyball team that a lot of folks think could've placed in a TMS double A state, maybe won the mid-state. School didn't sign them up, because in the past, they had not been historically very good. Well, when they were good, and we wanna play, we can't play, because we didn't notify TMS double A that we wanted to play. So, our view on that is, if you wanna play middle school volleyball, you need to sign up for the tournament at the end, and you need be willing to put the effort in to get to it and play through it. Uh, and, and, and I know that comes across harshish sometimes, and, and people say, "Oh, we can't do this, and we can't do that." You just never have, because the expectation was you could cut it off early, and nobody was really gonna say anything. So, i- if we're wrong in that stance, feel free to talk to us.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Parker.
Um, I just wanna, I think that it's a great idea to try to have baseball and softball travel together if they can, but I do think it's important that we remember supervision on the bus is also very important, and when you've got girls and boys, and in some instances, we've asked coaches to be the bus driver, or they've gotten their CDL, and they're, they're doing that role. They can't drive a bus and monitor girl, girls and boys on the bus. So, I just think we need to make sure that we think about that aspect of it as well.
Yeah, we do it pretty well with basketball, so we, we can make sure we can do it with the others if need be.
Thank you. Seeing no other lights, we will cruise on.
So, with no objections, we'll post that. I'll get with Jack, and we'll get that posted pretty immediately, okay? Um, let me scroll down here. Um, three point, three point, six point one, I opened this afternoon, uh, this bid with the county purchasing office. Ms. Ferris, who is the county purchasing agent, is out of town until Thursday. We opened it. Everyone's aware of the, of the outcomes of who bid what. She will sign it formally Thursday, and I will have it on here. We thought we would have it today. With your permission, we'll put it under new business for the board, uh, um, meeting, if that's okay with you guys, okay? Three point, three point, six point two, baseball field lighting at Mount Pleasant High School and Hampshire Unit School. These are our two high school fields remaining with wood poles. We're having a lot of arcing where they're turning. The lighting is really not equivalent to what we're doing everywhere else. This would buy them off of state contract through Musco, and these funds are available through the, um, funds that you've set aside for us for athletics, the two point five million out of fund balance. With that, let me note as well, I met this morning at EA Cox Middle School with city officials, Ms. Ventura, Mr. Massey, uh, Mr. Reagan and I have been talking. We are going to assume maintenance of the fields during this process. They turned their lighting system over to us today. Uh, Mr. Hall and I checked earlier. They are now, it's now on our format, just like all of our other lights. We took their locks off the gates today and put our locks on. Ms. Sweeney, who's the athletic director at EA Cox, met with us as well, and we're going to start a program to make sure the fields are ready, get them ready to play, and then as this process moves forward, and as different steps take place, and hopefully this transfer goes through smoothly, we will step up and have plans beyond just the day-to-day maintenance. But we did meet this morning, and we have accepted, um, the, the, um, the maintenance of those fields during this time. Okay? Three point, three point seven, surplus of Athandale properly. Some of you don't even know where this is. Athandale is a stop in the road out Highway seven, right past Chickasaw Trace. There used to be a school out there. You will see we've attached the, the, the property map and the plat for that. This school has fallen in. It is in, it is dangerous. We've actually been out there within the last six months. Mr. Hall's been out there, uh, Mr. Berry, Mr. Ring and I, and looked at what we would need to do to tear it down. We were approached with interest from people out there to purchase the property. It is in a floodplain, so it's not something that, and it's small, so it's not something that we can use. To do that, we have to declare it surplus, just like we, we did when we went through the McDowell process. My ask would be at the August board meeting for you to declare this as surplus property, and then we can handle the sale of that property either through, if you prefer bidding it through the paper, or through Gov. deals. Uh, Doug mentioned to me, there's a fee for Gov. deals, but the purchasing office cleaned up for me today. The county's agreement with Gov. deals charges a fee if we sell it through it. The school system's agreement with Gov. deals means that the purchaser pays that fee, and we're out no money. So, if you declare this surplus, we can either run an ad in the paper, we can publish it, do it the same way, or we can simply put it on Gov. deals, give it a certain amount of time, and accept the bid and do the transfer at the end. Either way, we would work with Mr. Wooliver to make sure that that goes accordingly, and before we posted anything anywhere, that we're all on the same page. But we would just ask that this does get this off of our, um, off of our, um, dossier of lands, and it's really not something that we can use. So, if, if, if approved, we would just surplus that and move forward. Three point, three point eight is the Battle. Oh, yes, sir.
Mr. Perryman, thank you for bringing this to our attention. Um, just, or, real quick, how many other properties do we have that just aren't useful for us, that are small little pockets like this?
Honestly, there's standalone, this is it.
Okay.
We own, um, the land that the Theta Water Towers are on. There's a hundred-year lease with the water department. We get a check every November first for a dollar. So, we have that. It's on our, um, list of lands, but it's not something that we control. Um, we have riders on old deeds. I think I've mentioned to you Water Valley, the community center, and they've been hesitant to do work on that, because they're scared that an elderly group running it, that if they fall sick, we're gonna swoop in and take the building, and we've, we've tried to assure them not. That was one of the reasons, Mr. Wooliver, when we talked about Battle Creek, said, "Let's not put a rider on that land." But as far as standalone land that is just odd, th- this is it.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Three point, three point eight is the proposal from us to, um, Battle Creek High School Mass Grading Project. This would be our ask to you to just simply allow us to bid this project. Spoke to Mr. Wooliver today. This does not require a vote on your behalf, so we offer it as an FYI. If you have conversation or wanna discuss this with us, then we're here for you. Three point, three point nine is the updated MOU with the Murray County Sheriff's Department between the SROs and the school system. Uh, there are very minor changes to this. We changed some should to some shalls. Uh, both sides are in agreement with this. We just offer this for your approval. Till this is approved in August, we will operate under the current MOU. The other thing that does change, I believe the dollar amount for working extra duties if they are paid, changed slightly, and that was to reflect rates across, uh, other school systems and across what they charge outside events. And that is all of the items for operations.
All right. We've owned the policy. Mr. Art, I'll turn it over to you.
Uh, first of all, I would like to, um, introduce the board to Kimmy Quentin. She was our legal extern this summer. I don't know, some of you all had the chance to meet her, but she was, she finished her first year at Belmont, and will go, be going back to her second year at Belmont. Actually, tomorrow's her last day. I'm very sad about it. Um, but I say that because, uh, the HR department is, uh, indebted to her for her, uh, work this summer. She touched every single policy that you see before you, as well as helped the district with contracts, public records requests. Um, I, I don't even know all the other things that she's done this summer. I mean, I do, but to list them out. But anyways, I just, I just wanted to say thank you publicly to her, um, so she's done an excellent job for us. Um, as you can see, we had a memo, which, which Kimmy also actually prepared for you all, um, that has the legal updates. Most of these updates are in fact from the TSBA. As we all know, uh, July one brings about new laws, new changes. As well, you guys get copied on, they do review of your policies, and some of those are the review of the policies, that there's just different things that have changed. So, the first three pages are all legal updates per TSBA. They all were submitted to TSBA. Um, so there were a couple ones where you'll see on Monday, I, I updated where it says final one, cause TSBA got to us, got back to us yesterday morning, and they had a few more other recommendations. So, those went on there, and so you'll see like the final updated version from what TSBA recommended. And then on the back part of this document, you'll see what their staff recommendations. Um, there are, well, first of all, are there any questions on the TSBA policies that are legal updates before we move to the other ones? I know there's a lot, so. And these all were reviewed with Mr. Stacy, that was instructional, Mr. Richie, that dealt with people services, Mr. Perryman looked at the ones that, that went into the operations world. Mr. Lindsay, I don't, sorry, not cheerful, but.
No, no question, just a comment. Uh, I think it might be beneficial to push out, uh, cause one of the policies addresses the new law that allows us to hire back retirees and.
Yes.
And, um, there may be some people, um, out there willing to come back when they look and see that, hey, they can still draw eighty-five percent of their retirement and work full-time, uh, in cer, in some instances. So, uh, maybe some, could be some benefit in trying to get that message out as we try to recruit people.
Yes, we actually do have a few retirees that are coming back. Um, TCRS isn't as apparently familiar with the new law, because I've reached out, and, um, I think Doug as well had reached out to some of his contacts. I reached out to my HR contacts, got people in touch with TCRS, and they're like, "Oh, yeah, there's a new law. Yeah, we don't have a form for that yet." Then we're like, "Okay, well, what do we need to do about it?" So, we, we've gotta work around for right now until TCRS gets, uh, a form for us. But we, we do al- already have a few, we have two that I know of, um, one science teacher and one sped teacher that are coming back, um, who are retirees with the district, and I believe, um, Gart's working on some of our bus drivers as well. So, yes, if you all know retired people, send them our way.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so I guess we can just ask, I had questions about two of these.
Sure.
Um, four point four oh two and four point four oh three. It's kinda the same question.
Yeah.
When I'm reading through those, and it talks about complaints form, cause I know these are new based on new state law, that gets kinda pretty specific on what's going on there, uh, with what's in our libraries or what do you have access to. One of the questions I did have was, um, because I've seen this come up in other districts.
Yeah.
It, it only says that this, the complaint can be filed by a parent, guardian, employee, or student. What do we do, or what is the district's approach to if someone, just from the, a, a community member or a citizen of Murray County decides to lodge a complaint with the content of a book or material we use? That was my initial concern, is, is this, are they excluded from this? Are they not able to make a complaint?
Well, I mean, I guess if the policy states that it's, I mean, people can always make complaints, but whether or how you respond to it, it would be different. So, in the policy itself, it would be, because then you, you would have a lot of people that might just want to complain. Well, I get that a lot. A lot of people do complain.
Well, I mean, and I understand that, and I don't wanna create something that's more, but I also think it's fair to balance that if someone does have a complaint, that we should have, still have a process for how we go through that. What, my concern would be that if, uh, uh, my, my father is a citizen of Murray County, right? If he decides to bring a, a concern, I, I would hope that there would be a process for how to handle that, not just that, "Ah, you're not on the list."
Well, I think always.
We can disregard it.
I mean, I think always you can bring a concern to your board member, and that's what I always tell people. One, you can always address the board, so a- a- anyone can sign up either at the normal meeting, or they can go through the process to where they're signed up before, so where they have the five minutes, and you can always email your board member. So, that is, that is always an opportunity to address the board.
What would be, and I, I, I agree with that. And I, and I'm kinda talking through this here. What would be the concern if we expanded this to be, uh, any citizen of Murray County?
Well, I mean, I guess just from legally speaking, the first thing that came to my mind was standing. Like, what, on what grounds do they have to be concerned about what's in our library? Like, they're, how are they getting in our library?
That's fair.
I, I mean, I.
Because there's two pieces here. One would be textbooks, which are publicly available.
Correct.
Um, and again, I'm just, I'm not, I'm not saying for sure I know the best way to handle this, but I, I do. Uh, what standing do they have? I would say if they're a taxpayer of Murray County, they have a standing. Um, I think that would be a fair approach from that. And again, I don't know if the answer is to put it here or to have something. My concern still is that there should be some process for that. It shouldn't just be at the whim of whoever gets their complaint to decide that. And I, and I guess it could be brought to the board, but that, maybe that needs to be clarified, that if someone other than one of these parties wants to bring a complaint, it needs to be handled some other way.
Sure. I mean, there is the whole complaint policy too, and there's three complaint managers, which, uh, there, there are a few in here, what I, um, that were, um, just updating.
Yeah, I saw where you listed.
Your information, yeah. So, like, Mr. Stacy would become one, uh, Mr. Richie is one, and, and I'm one of the complaint managers. So like Mr. Stacy would become one, uh, Mr. Richie is one, and, and I'm one of the complaint managers. So in that respect, I think it would go to either Mr. Stacy or Mr. Richie. Probably Mr. Stacy being over our assistant superintendent of instruction. If there's an issue with an instructional issue, they can handle the complaint that way. So that, that does lie in a different policy. So I think it, it could be taken care of in that way if, uh, just the citizen had an issue with what's in the library.
I was just going to say, I, I think that's great if we can just use a different process for just a general citizen. I think the, the thing about this policy is that triggers like a committee review. And I don't know that I would want to commit a review every time some random person off the street that pays their taxes, but just heard from somebody that there was something in some library that they didn't like. I will say, I kind of find this, I mean, I know we're doing this based off of state laws and I'm not going to like make any objections, but I mean, when we talk about library, we have a lot of online stuff too. So I don't know how much of that has to be monitored as well, but I'm just thinking about, yeah.
Yeah, and from what I, and Ms. Ventura had looked at these and when she, um, had emailed me is about, she, she, the librarians are well aware of the state law and the policy. So I understand what you're saying, um, that aspect of it too, so, um.
I, I just, I mean, I think for, I think we need to be supportive of our librarians and I think they're.
Absolutely.
Very much so in tune with what our community standards are and very cognizant of that. And, um, I just hope people will be very generous because at the end of the day, I think these kids are probably really adept at finding whatever they need to on Google or wherever on the world wide web. So I don't think we're like, our, I don't think our schools are necessarily the ones that are, um, exposing them to a lot of bad stuff. And, and at least now there's a process if, uh, if a parent, a student, or a employee feels like that's the case.
Yes, I'd, I'd agree with that.
So I got to follow up with that one too. So I know, and again, like it or not, there is some state law here that we're going to have to deal with. And I know there were, and I have had people reach out to me about concerns about, based on the state law, the way it's written, about what is and is not explicit materials. Do we, I mean, I know, do we have a process for how, as we're going? I know when I talked to Ms. Ventura, she said we, librarians have started the process of inventory, which is, I can only imagine is a hugely daunting task, uh, to go through. Made even worse by access to online materials through various, um, portals and everything else, which, um, I would just like some assurances that we're working through that process. Because one of the concerning things with state law is that I believe it makes people personally liable if some of these things are found in our libraries, which concerns me because I'm very concerned that we're going to have a librarian that, I can't expect them to read every book in the library, but I'm more worried about that we have processes as a board that as soon as we're aware of something that does run up against state law, that we address that very quickly. That's my big concern because I do not want a librarian to be, uh, just because somebody gets overzealous in some way and decide to hold them personally accountable, which again, unfortunately under state law, that can happen. I just want to make sure we have some processes internally to quickly respond to that, to protect our employees a- and to get these things taken care of so that we're in compliance with state law.
Sure. Uh, and Ms. Ventura is texting me. She said the law is clear and that the process will be more clearly defined as state board, um, rules and regs are, are promulgated. And she said we'll also promulgate those rules within ourselves, so yes.
Thank you. Um, I have a question about the new policy regarding the grading system. It's just a question. I know it's, it was created at the state level, but my question is this, do you know for those in high school, since they are changing that scale, will they like change what's already been, like if a student's a junior or a senior? Because the new, the new grading system, the way I look at it is like an A is going to be from a ninety to one hundred, B eighty to, so on our old system where it was a little bit different, I think like a B was like, I don't know, an eighty-five? Yeah, and A was a ninety-three. Are they going to like make that so GPAs are more in line? Have you heard anything on that?
Uh, Ms. Ventura said, no, it will not change previous grades.
Okay.
Is there, I'm speaking as a parent who has a student who has a lot of ninety-one to ninety-two. Is there any, I mean, that, that almost seems unfair because they're going to be competing against other students with other grades basically based off of a different scale. Is there any way to equalize that at all?
Well, aren't they all in the same?
Well, I mean, now.
I mean, they're competing against their peers who have all been in the same.
What I'm talking about from other, other systems.
Oh, different districts.
Yeah.
She said it will not retro, but it will affect how GPAs are determined.
But doesn't change.
I don't understand. That's what I'm asking, if the GPA is going to change, yeah, the grade, you know, I, I don't think the grades should change, but the GPA will be calculated on the ten point scale versus, uh, seven?
She says it will be affected how the GPA is determined.
Thank you, glad to hear that.
I just had a comment. It, it seems to me that it makes people more eligible for the whole scholarship using this grade system, correct?
I think so.
I was going to say, if I go back in time, I believe this was a, an issue that Mr. Lassiter, uh, those that recall him on the board, championed quite often, uh, about changing this and, and how other certain districts had already made this change some years ago to try to game the system, so to speak. So I, I, I can understand why, if we're all operating the same now, it adds a little bit of disparity there that, that wasn't in place.
All right, any other policies that we need to discuss off of these TBA records, uh, TSBA lists? Are we going to put all of these on consent going down to the COVID leave one? Yeah. Okay.
Sorry, I just was going to say, can, can you clarify though on some of these? Does it look like there was like an original and then an updated? When it all goes to consent, like you'll just put the.
Yeah, I'll just make sure the very final one. Yeah, there were a couple that TSBA had sent back yesterday and that we, I didn't want to remove something and then re-put, since I put it on kind of late yesterday, so you are all aware. Um, and I'd emailed Ms. Ventura just letting you know I had updated the ones with TSBA. So I'll make sure when it gets, when it gets moved over, that it's just the final one that's posted.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So those will, uh, go on consent. Now, uh, policy five point three zero five.
All right, the word that should not be spoken. So the COVID team met, um, and I believe there wasn't, there should have been an, I think an FYI, just in general, about what the COVID procedures and policies, not pol- but procedures going forward for this next school year. There has been COVID going around again. Um, so the COVID team met and, um, is bringing this as a recommending for five days of COVID leave, um, for this school year for, uh, employees who would be positive. Um, so it's no longer like a household member and it cut it down from ten days to five days. Uh, the thought being, one, um, for new, for new staff members, brand new staff, brand new teachers, they don't have sick leave yet, they have not built anything up. Um, so if they would need it, this would help them out. Uh, two, we ended up doing this last year, but quite a bit later into the school year. And then we went back and we retroed people's pay, we gave them additional days back. Um, so as to kind of be more on top of things this year, bringing it now before school really starts. Um, knowing that we have had people out, um, a lot, twelve month staff, it's, has been out, um, with COVID. It's going around in the community again, so just trying to have a, a jump start on that. This is what, um, Ms. Ventura and the COVID team was bringing forth to the board as their recommendation.
And just to clarify, this is just five days for the year, not five days each incident, correct?
Correct, five days for the entire year.
No, I'd rather not.
Oh, wait a minute.
I'd rather not.
All right. Mr. Lindsay.
No, I, I, at, at some point we have to get past it. Um, we have sick days for, you know, w- we don't, we don't have specific days set aside for, um, heart problems. We don't have specific days set aside for, um, strep throat. We, I mean, at, at some point we have to, you know, a- a- and I get the new employees don't have days built up, but, um, before COVID, they, they didn't have days built up either. I mean, that, that's, it's, it's just, at, at some point we have to go on living and, um, personally, I, I'm just, um, at some point we have to cut ties with this and, and I'm ready to do that.
Also, um, I just want to clarify, new teachers are able to go, uh, in the negative when they first start working and they don't have sick days as long as they are going to accrue it by the end of the school year. So they are allowed to use their sick days as they need to and they should get ten in their first, uh, school year, so.
All right, so we'll just move this on to the meeting as a voting issue or item rather.
But do know, that is just teachers, so that doesn't affect any of your classified staff.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. All right, moving on to policy five point three zero five.
So these next few set of policies are some that stemmed out of the, what was from the MOU and the MOU discussion. These, what we did was we took basically, or, or should I say what, what Kimmy did? Um, if she took basically what we had from our MOU, what had been written up and drafted in the MOU and found the, the appropriate policies that went to it. So for the five point three oh five is the FMLA. Um, on the note that you guys have, it had been submitted to TSBA. I actually got that back from them, so if you'll see, there's one that says like a, a final one from them that has the red lines. That was, was some of their recommendations if we did this. Um, so all in all, it's just basically a proposal for doing four weeks of paid maternity or paternity leave for an employee. And again, that is for an eligible employee, so you have to have been with the district for a full year in order to qualify for that paid leave, because that's how, that's how the FMLA works there. So that, that's what that policy looks at, is looking at paying for four weeks of paid maternity or paternity leave. The next policy, um, five point three oh seven, physical assault leave. There, again, uh, TSBA did get back with me on that one, so there's two that are posted. Um, they said to remove some, like actually putting the cap because there was already language in policy that would address this. But this one in particular would open it up to all of our employees, not just certified teaching staff. So this would also qualify any classified, like any, um, you know, like your special education assistance, things of that nature. Um, and then it would also, um, an additional thing in here would be a reimbursement to, if there's any kind of damage to actual, like a, the thought is like a, a cell phone or something like that. That was, the, the nine hundred dollars was, um, that came out from the MOU discussions because we all know cell phones cost more than they should. But anyways, um, that, that's kind of where that, that came from. And then the final one, it doesn't really have a, it doesn't have a policy number yet. It was a, um, thought of calling a local leave. Um, and this would be where it would grant additional personal days to the teaching staff based on their years of service with Murray County Public Schools. So this would be more of a, um, when you, when you look at this, your, your FMLA kind of is a good recruitment for your, your staff that's starting out. Um, and, um, keep them here because they have to be here for at least a, a year to, to have used that. And then your local leave policy, that's a really good on retention and retaining your staff and having them stay with Murray County Public Schools, because that's the only way they're going to get these days is if they stay with Murray County Public Schools. And it, it goes into adding in to personal days. You know, as I, as I sit and think about it too, like, you know, I, I, I know our, our teaching staff and they're on a two hundred day calendar, but the thing about it is, is, you know, a lot of things happen during a school year that with, people get married, they, you know, they don't plan these things, but y- y- you attend certain things for your family during a school year. And then, um, for teaching staff, if they, if they miss certain days, then that, that docks them down on their years of service and T and Compass, it goes negative to their retirement and things like that. So this is kind of like a, a nice thing for the district to give that's, this is, thank you for being a staff member of Murray County Public Schools and teaching our students. That it, it came out of the MOU and so that's kind of where that thought process came from. Um, like I said, note, I know there's at least one more policy that was going to be discussed, uh, the MOU, but Ms. Ventura wanted to look it over more before we brought it back. But these were three policies that I know three, uh, t- at least two board members had discussed, um, wanting to see on here. So they've been brought to you and are open for your discussion and direction where to go to next.
Okay, so I guess we'll start at the top. Um, how do we currently handle FMLA for all other employees? I mean, I guess as we start to look at integrating these in for the teacher, the ones that came from the MOU, how do we handle it for all other employees?
What do you mean? I mean, FMLA is handled the same for all employees. So you, everyone has, you have to be an eligible employee, so you have to work here for a year. You only get so much.
Change then of what we would be adding, all of this is already going to be covered under federal law except for the paternity portion? Is that, would that be correct?
The, what would change would be covering four weeks of paid leave.
Okay, the paid leave, got it.
Yes, yes, sir. Yeah, so you would still, they would still be eligible to take, for maternity and paternity in particular, there's twelve weeks of FMLA and then there's sixteen weeks under Tennessee maternity, paternity. They run concurrently, so in total you can be up, you can be off up to sixteen weeks for maternity or paternity in the state of Tennessee. But this would say four of those weeks would be paid by the district. The rest of that would be either you can use your sick leave, any other kind of leave that you would have, or take it unpaid.
Okay, so I get, and again, pardon me if I'm not, I'm, I'm being slow tonight.
No, sorry.
So for outside of previous, outside of teachers, did we do any paid maternity leave for anyone else?
No, we've never done paid leave. No, no, no.
I'm just trying to, so as, I mean, as we start to look at enrolling these into policy, we're going to have to draw distinctions in what we did do and what we're looking at doing for all employees.
Yes, there's never been any kind of paid FMLA leave or paid maternity, paternity leave. It was just all.
Except for teachers?
No, no.
There wasn't either.
There was never paid leave.
Nope. Okay, all right.
No, it was just you used your own sick day, vacation days, whatever you had built up.
All right, I'm starting to understand then, thank you.
Sorry, yeah.
Okay, just, just.
Thank you.
Your own, go ahead.
When this was proposed in the, the board team and, and MCEA and, and you sat in on it, were these things proposed because you are trying to find ways to recruit?
This one in particular was proposed by myself.
Yes.
And it was part of recruiting.
Right. Okay, and, and thinking it, did you look and see how many other systems it would, would be, would be, be unique or?
We'd be very unique. There's one school district or school, it's called Lead Academy up in Nashville, that offers, I think, eight weeks paid maternity leave. Um, I have talked to some other, um, the, the company that we use for our hiring system now, um, one of their attorneys that we've spoken, um, just in general about getting things with our FMLA leave in line. Um, and she also really believes that eventually.
Everybody's going to do it.
It's going to start coming, um, so why not be on the cutting edge of something?
And I know you all discussed this with, uh, Mr. Laconan because it couldn't really get across particularly, but do you have a comment about it? Sure, go.
Uh, I was given that the average, uh, occurrences in a fiscal year is twenty-seven. So with that, uh, the cost per year would be around one hundred and ninety thousand dollars. Uh, one hundred and ninety thousand, nine thirty-three and eighty-seven cents if, um, that was to move forward for four weeks of paid leave.
Yeah, because it, and it's hard to vary because you could have a educational assistant who uses this. You could have a, you know, a teaching staff who's using it. You could have a administrator who's using it. So obviously the, the cost would be, might be different. You know, if you're looking at somebody who's a twelve month staff that doesn't need to substitute, you've already budgeted for them anyways. Um, for a teaching staff member, now, obviously there's a substitute cost that would be in there. The person's probably taking off anyways and there's still that cost. Um, I, I know the state of Tennessee itself has gone to doing paid maternity and paternity leave. Um, and one of the reasons was, um, that I read from Governor Lee was, was that these, this money is already budgeted for. Um, salary line items are, are already in your budget. Um, the additional cost that would be is that if you are, the, the sub costs and things like that for teaching staff, that is a little different that the state of Tennessee is not paying, you know, their person to probably come in and have an interim for, for them for that.
Okay, let me ask a couple more questions. Uh, let's talk about the physical assault leave. How does this very differ from what we presently do?
Well, so the physical assault leave is kind of, the policy itself was a little sparse and there was a lot of information that was actually contained in the MOU that capped that out at the twenty days. And so, but there was nothing talking to the actual reimbursement of property, like if property got damaged. So that would be new for the policy. And as well, the policy as it stood, uh, again, only applied to. So that would be new for the policy. And as well, the policy as it stood, again, only applied to the certified. This would actually apply to all of, to all staff. And, and I do know from my short experience here, that there are educational assistants that this does happen to, and it could definitely benefit them, um, if, if this policy were to go forward, because we have had people, um, it, it kind of stinks being an HR person going, sorry, if you'd been a teacher, we would, it wouldn't dock you sick days, but since you're not and you're hurt, sorry, your, your sick days are, are coming out if you need to stay home for it.
Okay, another quick question, lots of likes on. Uh, the, the third one, because my understanding that was kind of brought up to be a mental health day.
Correct.
It, like, you just had, you're going to take a day off, and then it kind of evolved into how many days based on years of experience and so forth like that. And it, it really doesn't say in, in the policy that it's a mental health day. I don't know how you would even define that really, but.
Yeah, I, I think that was the thought that was for mental health, but also just like adding in personal days. But rather than, the thought too was we didn't want to just add to the personal days, because we wanted it to be distinguished, that these are days that are local to Murray County only, not just because, because everyone gets one personal day a semester, depending on, no matter where you're at in Tennessee, that, that's, that's state law.
Will these be accrued or, uh, you know, a personal day goes forward if you don't use it, it becomes a sick day?
That's a good question. Yeah, now as it is, personal days turn into sick days.
Right, but will thi- this day?
I think it does.
It does say it, okay, alright.
Ms. Irvin.
So I'm probably going to come out harsh, and I don't like coming out harsh, but I've got a question. Mine's about the paternity leave. Um, I was a supporter of such, because I want to attract the best talent that we can from Murray County. But I have a question. Um, before we start throwing money at things, I, I'd like to know, how things in HR? And, and I ask that because just this week, I've had two people who I, who I, I would have thought would have been lovely, um, candidates for hire, tell me that they would never apply again for Murray County schools, because they have done it, and they have done it, and they have done it, and they never hear back. And one said they got a interview, and no one ever reached out to them ever again, and they're just, they're done. And that's hard to hear as a board member, and I know in times past, I've heard that we have shortages in HR. We have backlogs in HR. Do we have enough help to keep things running? I mean, or what's going on there? Because we can offer the moon and stars, and if we can't get them to where they feel like they're, I mean, because I get this. Every, every talent wants to feel like that they're an asset to our schools, not that. I feel like what's being communicated to them, whether intentionally or not, is that they're not, um, of value. And I know that that's not the case. So that's why I'm asking, is there holes or is there something? Because while I'm in support of getting, um, everything we can to attract the best talent, it's not going to do us any good if we can't make those people feel like Murray County's a place to be up front.
Sure. So I think there's, there's a couple different things going on there. Um, one, the way our process works is somebody applies for a job, and the principal's the one who contacts, and the principal's the one who interviews. Um, then they make the recommendations to HR. They get approved by the necessary approvers, and HR reaches out for that, for the initial, you've been recommended for this job, can we answer any questions for you, here's what your salary would be, would you like to accept? Um, as of today, everyone that had full approvals, except for the one, I mean, everybody that had a full approval in the teaching world has been called and offered a job. I, I know that. I sat there and called about seven different people before I came and sent all of their intent to hires and pre-employment screening before I came here today. Um, do we have a lot of long hours? Absolutely. My husband texts me almost every night, are you coming home? How's it going? Um, most of us don't leave till seven, six thirty, seven PM, making sure people get called and that people are in. So how's it going in HR? Very long days. Are people getting called? Yes, they are. Sometimes there's a little bit more of a lot, a lag, depending on when it is. It, it does happen, because like we, like Mr. Stacy said, we were at new, we had new teacher orientation. I think we had close to ninety new teachers show up. So yes, are we hiring people? Absolutely, we are hiring people. Are there still some people resigning? I was talking to Mr. Howe and Mr. Lindsay. Yes, there are still some people who are sending resignations for various and unsundry reasons. Um, so we're processing new hires. We're processing people that still have to leave. We're, we're, we're processing a lot of information. Um, so it, it, it does happen. And I say that because when your principals are the ones who are looking at them, and they're the ones who are contacting for interviews, and they're the ones making the recommendations to hire. And I, what part of what I heard you say, so that's from a, a principal's standpoint. Maybe they, for whatever reason, that applicant wasn't what that principal thought they needed in their building. There may have been, they may have been a great and fine applicant, but maybe they had a lot of other applicants too. I know in our elementary, we're, there's not real wood to knock on, but we're sitting pretty good in most of our elementary schools. I mean, we've had a few people send in resignations this week, um, but I remember a couple weeks ago, I had somebody calling me, it's like, oh, I want to do an elementary school. And I literally sat there on the phone and looked through all my job boards, and was like, oh, well, um, well, I got one opening. Um, which is great and fantastic to say. Uh, and now to say that we need some math and English and science teachers in our middle schools and high schools, absolutely. We absolutely need that. Um, so, I mean, I was over at Central, what day is today? Tuesday, last week. Um, you know, sitting with Dr. Steele and his administration going through, okay, what math openings do we got? What are we going to do? How are we going to get these things filled? Um, so are there still openings in the district? Yes, I'm not going to lie, but a lot of those are math, English. We've had a few people, like, leave this last week. So I think when you guys see, when the public can see a job board, what you guys aren't seeing is when the job was posted. So a lot of those jobs have just been posted in the last few days, whereas we've been filling positions all summer. Um, so, and like I said, we had ninety-something people, but we still have more. I mean, HR's hired over a hundred and fifty people this summer. That's a lot of people to process. And when you think about, um, just what it takes to touch one person, like, the shortest amount of time I would say would be a half hour that it takes an HR staff member. Maybe two hours at the maximum, depending on how much a person needs, how much they need, you know, where they're at in the process and what kind of staff member. Did they need help getting their license? Do they need, making sure they got their tea and compass set up? Do they, what kind of help do they need? They come in, they get their badge. Do they need help filling out their benefits? So it takes a lot of time. Yes, it does. So how are our HR, like I said, long days, but we're, we're doing alright. I mean, can we use more staff in the summer? I'm not going to say no.
And listen, and I know, I know that you are doing your personal best, but I feel like it's my job when I hear these holes in the community to reflect those, because, and I know not everybody's the perfect fit, but I just, I do, I want to attract the best talent that we can. And I don't want people to feel that way, even if they're not a fit for that job. I wish we have a way to reach out to them and let them see their value, maybe where it may not be in that position, maybe elsewhere.
Sure.
So hopefully we do that.
So.
Go ahead.
One thing to that, we did actually, last week, our retention and recruitment person started. Um, so one of the things that, that she's going to be focusing on is looking at applicants who have applied for jobs that didn't get hired for that, but we still have other openings in the district. Um, I did that one. We have, unfortunately, we have several counseling positions open. So we went through, we looked at all our counselors. Amazingly enough, out of all the people who applied, who were qualified, because you do, there, you have to have a license for that, um, position. There's, there's no exceptions to that. There was only one person. We reached out to them, and they're like, you know what, I'm, I've decided I'm not going to move districts. I'm just going to stay where I'm at. So that is something that we're looking at, is we're going to be looking at, you know, you know, our math applicants. Who, what other math applicants do we have in the district? Is there any way that we can do this? Uh, we tried to do that last year. The system wasn't great. This system works much better to see who all of our math applicants are. So that is one thing that we're working towards. We do always try to notify individuals that they were not selected for the job. What happens is, is HR does wait, like if there's a request to hire, we wait until that person has their screenings done. Because you don't want to notify somebody that they didn't get that job, and then candidate A. who didn't, for whatever reason, didn't pass whatever background check or whatever, and then you've got to go back and find it. So sometimes there might be a little bit of delay in them receiving information, but it's also because we don't want to notify somebody who we might actually need to hire.
So, and I think that that's, I think you just hit the nail on the head right there. I think that's what's happening. I've heard screenings are taking tremendous amounts of times, and I would ask that we think about, is there a way to expedite those? Because I've heard somewhere like, is that upward of like three weeks? Have I heard that? Is that legit, or is that?
Not unless it's because they weren't able to get in for the screenings. Um, now, the, the background checks have been taking a little bit longer in the month of July, because I think everybody is hiring, so TBI is just taking longer. Um, it's not so much, it's just you have to go through the TBI, FBI back, that, it is what it is. And like every district has to do that, and every district is hiring. Um, the, so that, we've seen it take a little bit longer. Um, but the drug screen, once people get in, we usually know the week of, um, unless there's something strange.
Thank you. Let's bring it back to the policy. I think we kind of got off on a sidetrack there.
Sorry.
No problem. Uh, is there any other comment on the policy? I'm sorry to cut the discussion off, but I think we. Need to stay focused. Um, Mr. Sam.
Thank you. Um, so on the first policy, the, um, maternity, paternity, well, or FMLA, the twenty-seven on average, is that just the teacher average?
Not to everybody.
That's, that's, that's all average, okay. And the, the other, um, for the local leave, so for one, I, I, I can't support this, and the main reason is this. We're already limited in the number of days we have teachers in the classroom. I feel like, um, we're fighting, that's why, that's why we fight so hard for those full days instead of half days, you know, before holidays and things like that. Um, and last year, Mr. Hickman had to close a school on a long, long weekend because of teacher shortages. Do I think it was because there was a mass exit of, or a mass problem of those teachers in particular schools getting, uh, sickness? It wasn't, because Mr. Hickman said he always has trouble with teachers using sick days on long weekends. And so I feel like we all, unle- unless we tighten down our sick day policy to have some accountability, I can't support giving additional days. I know, well, I'll just leave it at that. I, I do, I do think that's casting a wide net. Not all teachers do that. I know that. I've already caught flak over, over my stance, and I'm okay with that. But there, it is a problem, I feel like. How, how, how do we combat it? Right now, I don't think we are. I, I think our administrators are told to kind of police it, but I don't think that they really do.
Mr. Howe.
So I going forward, I, I kind of want to put this as, this is a new day in Murray County. This is a new day for not only teachers, but for every staff member that we care and we appreciate every single person. Right now, because of the things that we've done with discipline, with pay, and the potential to move forward, we got a new superintendent, it's a new day. I think, I don't know this for sure, but I think from this time last year to right now, I think we're in a much, much, much better position than we were last year, the person, in regards to personnel. Um, we have, is it two hundred people for ESS has ready to go as subs? Is that correct?
Uh, two hundred and ten was the last.
Two hundred and ten.
And they have like more in the pipeline.
And last year, we, I don't even think we had a hundred the whole entire year. So we are ready to go. We have subs in place. Uh, it's a completely different ballgame than we were in last year. We had different leadership than we did last year. And I don't know about you, but would you work for someone that you want to work for? You don't just give fifty percent or seventy percent. You give a hundred percent all the time. And I think that's what we're going to be getting. Teachers are energized, teachers are excited, and we need to be moving forward. So I say that because fifty years ago, vacation time was completely, you would have been crazy to say, we're going to give you vacation, paid vacation time. Sick time didn't, wasn't there. Insurance? Rich people had insurance. It wasn't the common person that had insurance. So moving to today, those are all just standardized. If you don't have those, you're probably not going to employ a single person. That's how these things are that are, that we're talking about, the, the paid maternity leave. So we're not just looking at school systems. We're not competing against just school systems. We need to get that out of our mentality. We are competing in the job market. And paid maternity leave, whether you agree with it or disagree with it or like it or not, it's coming. Like, that's going to be a standard, just like insurance and paid vacation. Um, obviously, the physical assault, that's not something that's available to everybody. I personally do get that as a police officer in the city of Columbia. If I get injured on the job, I have some protections, because my job is dangerous. Well, guess what? In some of these instances, teachers, EA's jobs are dangerous. I, I wouldn't expect a maintenance man who is in a school to not act, because he, he, he may get injured. No, if he gets injured, we need to be taking care of that person. He's helping to, to calm a situation down, wreck up a fight, whatever. Our EA, these, every one of our employees need to be protected by these things. Um, local leave, wow, I mean, that just sets us apart from other school districts. My goal here is to make Murray County the place to teach. We're on the right track. We are, we are, we, our teachers are excited. They want to work here. They want to work for us. I've talked to teachers today, this morning, and they're so excited about coming back. They're ready, they're ready to teach. They, everything I've just mentioned, they are excited about. Why would we not offer this with this is going, and this, why would we not be on the forefront of something? Why would we not want these tools so that we can help our HR to close that gap? I, I don't know why, and we're, we're talking about something for every employee. And that's, that, that is why I support this way over an MOU. An MOU is specifically for teachers. And in three years, that can specifically be taken away from nine hundred teachers, right? It's a lot harder to take something away from eighteen hundred employees, especially when it's an effective recruiting tool and retention tool that we can use to retain the talent that we've gone out and spent money to recruit. So all of these, I think, are excellent. I think that we can use these to move forward. And you know, here's the thing, if we find that we need to readjust these, it's a policy. We can change them. We can make tweaks. We can, we can make them better. We can make them worse if we, for some reason wanted to. So, and this is just a start. I'll be honest with you. I have other ideas that I would like to offer as benefits to our teachers, or our, I'm sorry, our staff. And this is just the starting point. I think that this is where we need to be moving forward as a district. Like I said, I, I generally want to make this the best place for teachers to come, and I think this is a step in moving in that direction.
Thank you, Mr. Lindsay.
I'm going to take these in a different order. Talk about number two first, but, uh, policy five point three oh seven. If, if we have an employee hurt on the job while they're doing their job, isn't that covered by workman's comp?
Yes, so it is, it can be covered by work, it is covered by workman's comp. Now, workman's comp, depending on how many days you're out, depends on what's covered for your leave. So you have to be out for so many days, like you do have to use either your own personal sick leave or whatever leave in order for workman's comp to kick in. Uh, I believe it's seven days off the top of my head. Um, and then even at that, once it goes, once it, if you go past that, then you get paid at, um, sixty-six and a third percent or something like that. So workman's comp does cover things, but for a certain portion. So if you're only out for three days, then workman's comp's not going to do anything. You'll either have to use your sick leave or miss three days of pay if you don't have that.
And the, uh, the nine hundred dollars, where, I mean, where did that, no, I, I know it got mentioned the price of a cellphone, but it, it just.
That was pretty much, I think, in the MOU discussion. One of the things was literally like if you have your cellphone or a kid throws a cellphone and it gets damaged, um, I'm assuming that came from actual experience from, from the members of the MOU that, that were in the classroom.
So I'm going to be a little harsh for a minute. Do we, we require teachers to have a personal cellphone on them?
N- no.
That's, that's kind of my point. I mean, I, I know that's the world we live in. That's, that's kind of my point. I mean, I, I know that's the world we live in, but. But I, and I, I don't have as much, I probably could live with the physical assault leave, but, uh, jumping up to the, uh, maternity, paternity leave. The, the, the paid maternity, paternity leave. It's, it's a talking point in, um, politics. It's kind of low hanging fruit. And, um, so we just said on average, we have twenty-seven people, you know, a, a year that, that uses that. Well, out of seventeen or eighteen hundred employees, we're not, that, that's not a big offer, um, to very many employees. And, and then it, it's only targeted to a certain, um, a certain age group, uh, but.
Well.
Well.
In the legal world, anybody is considered to always be able to have a.
But in realistically, I mean.
It's discrimination, so anyone's possible that they could have it. You could also adopt, so that would also account, so anybody could.
But what I'm saying, realistically, my, uh, and I use myself, I'm forty-one years old. The possibility of me using maternity and, or, or paternity leave is very slim. A lot slimmer than it was when I was twenty-four years old. So we, we, we can use semantics all we want, beat around the bush, but, but the bottom line, it, it, it is what it is. It, it targets a small group of employees.
That's the same with retirement benefits. Uh, sorry, not to.
But, I mean, you, you have to do, that's a whole nother topic, but, but we're, we're not, we're talking about FMLA, FMLA leave.
Correct.
You know, we, we don't, we don't pay for, uh, uh. We're not going to give you four weeks paid if you have a heart attack and that, that seems silly, but, but we're, we're, we're picking one. Incident in, in an employee's life to pay them, to, to give them a benefit that, that no other people can get. I mean, there's people that can't have kids, there's, there's, uh, I mean, you can go on and on, but, um. I, I, I'm not in, in favor of that and, and I, and I won't be voting for it. And then the, the last policy, uh, the local leave. Right now, we, we pay you for unused sick days and there's only one reason we do that. We, we pay for unused sick days because we don't want people to use them. And, and anybody can say what they want to, but that, that's, that's why that policy's there because we want teachers in the classroom. That there is no replacement for a teacher in the classroom. I, I appreciate the job that, that substitutes do. We can't function without them. But a substitute in the classroom is not comparable to that certified teacher that's in the classroom. So any day that that teacher is not in the classroom, our students are, are missing out on something. And any day that, that a, 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 a long tenure teacher is not in the classroom, my hope would be they miss out on even more. Well, this policy says, if I've been here for twenty-seven years, you're going to let me take four extra days off. Well, that's four days of instruction lost for those kids. And four days of, my hope is high level instruction from a very experienced teacher. So that, uh. I, I could live with the, uh, physical assault leave. Um, I get it, uh, but, but the other two, I just, I, I can't go along with.
Thank you very much, Mr. Moore.
Gee, Wayne, we get to disagree on something. Um, I, I will say, I was one of the people that was in favor of the local leave and, and I'll kind of explain what I was looking at there. As we talked before about targeted approaches to employees. This was not for just being a teacher for twenty-seven years or so many years. This was for people that had been with Murray County for a certain number of years. So in my mind, you know, again, I can understand your approach on that. In my mind, what we're looking at there was something that was targeted specifically for longevity in our district. To be honest, the idea that it would roll over to, uh, the sick day bank. If you didn't use them was not really what my original intention was when I was talking about this. I think that, that came up a day after when I wasn't there. But I can see the merit there. I would, I would argue though, that I don't think these are days that someone is going to take above and beyond. The intention was that these would be days that, uh, and as I think somebody said, I don't know if you can label them as mental health days, but. The intention was that these would be days that our employees would not have to justify why they needed to take a day off. Because frankly, in any other setting, uh, that person is going to take a sick day. They're going to say that they're sick. Uh, in most cases, they're going to find a way to be sick and they're still going to take the day off. So as they've been, again, as a benefit to longtime employees, the spirit of that was to give them a day. Out of respect for them being here in the district to be able to say, hey, I just need a day off. To not have to justify that with either being a, a sick day or some other bereavement day or any other kind of day. Uh, I can understand why you wouldn't want to do it. I, you make some good points on that. I just wanted to explain what the, kind of the spirit of that was. Also, if I could go back up to the, uh, that, since I was in on the discussions, the nine hundred dollars was based on roughly the cost of a new cellphone. But you make a good point about, uh, Wayne, about the, uh, why do you really have that phone out? I can, I can see some merit to that argument too. I don't think that ever came up in our discussions, strangely enough. To go back to this and, and I think Chad brought up a good point on this. I really appreciate that we're in this format, being able to discuss these things on an individual basis. And can flesh out individual merits as a board and then decide what is the best for our employees. So whether, whether Wayne and I agree on that locally policy. I think, uh, under this format where we put these things into policy or choose not to, we are able to be responsive. If we decide this is something that our employees as a whole need and this board wants to meet that need and feel like that is going to draw in, uh, the staff that we're looking for, we can do that. At, at almost any meeting and pretty immediately make affect change that is not bound by, uh, some other rules and, and terms that we just don't, aren't able to respond quickly and effectively with. So, um, I'm still not where I, sure where I am on some of these, I'll be honest, uh, but it's, I think it's been some good points brought up tonight on all these.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Sam.
So I, I can kind of go along with you, Mr. Moore, on, um. I don't know that if, if we're talking about. This, you know, trying to either incentivize leave days, do we need to talk about just paid time off? I know lots of employers, the hospital, my wife went to paid time off. Where they don't have to try to produce sick, a sick note or. Funeral, you know, pamphlets or whatever, you know, they just use their paid time off versus. Giving, we're, we're going to have personal, sick and local. It's just, it, the, the water, water's getting muddy. Maybe, maybe it's time to rethink everything. And, and go with a, just one type of leave. It may not be, I think, I think the, the purpose of paid time off, you, you might not get as many days or hours or however. And, but as you, as you gain seniority, you might gain more hours with your, your, um, with your years of service. Which. The school year is about to start, so that might not be hashed out tonight, but.
Uh, Mr. Todd, did you happen to add something to that?
Well, with, that, that's a great, I, I think that's absolutely great. The problem of it is, is state law with teachers. Is we, we have to do sick leave. Like it's codified in state law as to how sick leave goes. So that's where sometimes I, I think it's. That's where we do find ourselves in the education world and we do have to go into those certain things and we're, we can't compare ourselves to just, there. I mean, while like what Mr. has out, yet Mr. Howe said, we, we are competing, e- especially when you look at your CTE world, like. We're definitely competing against the real world for people to come in and teach our CTE jobs. And we had several people that we offered jobs to and ended up rejecting them for diff, for various reasons. So yeah, we're definitely competing, but then we have to look at what state law says that we can do for, for the licensed personnel and we have to do sick leave because. Like when people transfer districts, people can transfer their sick leave, um, for licensed and, and that kind of stuff. And there are the personal days that they have per state law. So, and then that's where if you get it, when if you want it, and then I think that would get away from what Mr. Lindsay was going to go to as an employee is an employee. And then we couldn't create just PTO leave for non-licensed people. That, that's where you had to get those categories. So it kind of gets a little. That's where you would contact your state legislator and, and talk to them about changing TCA, but.
I'll be brief. So just, you know, looking at, I mean. Twenty-seven, twenty-seven people, twenty-seven teachers, twenty-seven math teachers, twenty-seven science teachers. If we just recruited twenty-seven because of the maternity. That would be half, almost half of the teaching positions that we have available. So it may seem like just a small amount that we're affecting. But if it was just twenty-seven math teachers, if it was just twenty-seven science teachers, if it was just. I mean, we have thirty coaching positions. If it was just thirty coach, I mean, I know that doesn't affect, but just, I'm just saying. If it, it affects so many, but we're, we're so close to being a hundred percent field on teachers. And if this would entice five, ten, I, 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 I think the benefit would just be, I, I mean, it's, it's, it's the mental benefit that. Your board, your local board cares about you as an employee to offer that as a benefit and.
Sure.
Maybe at forty-one, you may not have a child or can't get a child or want a child, or maybe you've adopted a child and now it's available. It's twenty-seven. If that's the average and that's a hundred and ninety thousand? A year. I mean, I, I just. I don't know what the true impact would be on hiring, uh, recruiting, uh, and retention, but. It just seems like a small amount of our, of our eighty million dollar, uh, personnel budget that I, I just think it's a small price to pay to hopefully reap better rewards.
Thank you, Mr. Lindsay.
I'll push back on you just a minute. The positive for twenty-seven on average may be, uh, a negative for the other seventeen hundred. Because when, when you look at family medical leave, um, federal law grants us, uh, twelve weeks a, a year. That, uh, i- i- if a doctor fills that paperwork out and, and says we're due that, then, then we receive those twelve weeks. We, we use any time we have built up to pay for those. So, um. You may be on family medical leave and, and get four weeks paid paternity because you, you had a kid. But I may have to take family medical leave because, um, I have to take care of a, a sick, ailing parent and I won't get paid for it. But we're both on family medical leave. But, but, so, so there may be seventeen hundred people that begrudge the idea of it because that, they don't receive it when on average twenty-seven throughout the year do. So what's good for one, isn't always good for the whole. Um, and, and that's my point. It, it touches such a small number of people in a positive way. If we're not careful, we can touch a great number of people in a negative way.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Irvin.
Thank you. This just popped in my head. I was one also in favor, but I, I have a question. I don't know if it's more for Doug or if it's more for you, but. I know in years past, we had some, um, maybe tracking, um, problems with days and time off. If we added a local leave, is that going to complicate or muddy the waters even more? Or do we have systems in place that could handle such?
I was just about to talk about that. Um, you know, the, the, we've already specced the system without local leave. It was not in existence. It will be launched this fall. We're trying to get everything rolling for that. People are going to be testing and clocking in the first day of school. So, you know, this is an active, live system. Uh, food service is already using it and, and it doesn't have that, so. Basically, it would just result in more work. Can, can the system be specced to have this leave in there? Yes, it can. But, you know, I did not plan to add three new, you know, bring back COVID leave, add maternity leave, add local leave. So I, I really don't, I have emailed that, uh, when, when I was asked for the cost of, you know, what's the cost per day of local leave, you know? Based on an average teacher salary and fulfilling a position, whether it's non-certified or certified. Your average cost is about four hundred and eighteen dollars and fifty-eight cents a day, not counting additional work on my staff. So, uh, that's kind of what we're looking at, but can we spec this system to do that? Of course. Um, I, I will say, uh, COVID tracking last year, it, it was not stellar. There, there would be. Hey, I used my sick days back in the fall, but I realized I had COVID back then and now it's spring. I'd like to exchange those out. Those were real life scenarios, things that we pushed back on. We, we needed detail. We needed, you know, and, and the policy does say that now, you know, it, it. We need a positive test, so. But reporting is going to vary because really my team is not involved with that. We get the report. You know, uh, from the nurses at each school, so.
I, I just want to say one thing about the, um, FMLA paid maternity, paternity leave. We did have actually a few people reach out to HR about that after the discussion. The MOU asked if we had that. We said, no, it's going to be discussed. Um, I actually had a new teacher come up and ask me about that today. They're signing up for their benefits, looking at, um, you know, short-term disability and things like that. They're like, does, does the district pay for any of this or is my option, I, I need to make sure I sign up for short-term disability? You know, if that's an option for me, if I need to know, go ahead and pre-plan. And, um, one of the things she said, you know, it, it would be nice to know too, is like, we're here to take care of the kids. It'd be nice if the board was taking care of us. So we, like, if we had a small opportunity to stay home and take care of our kids. So I, I think that's one thing that when you look at, um, and, and I understand there's, there's lots of different reasons for FMLA. I, I, I totally understand that, but I think one thing is like having that ability and I'm not a parent, so I don't know, but I assume it's very important. That you get to bond with your child during their first few weeks. And one of the reasons we sometimes lose employees is they can't find childcare at the very beginning. It, childcare is, is not super easy to find. Um, it's, it's expensive. So giving somebody maybe a little bit extra time for them to be able to find that childcare and get them in there. Can be another reason that we can, can maybe retain some of those staff members, not just recruit some of them. And, and, and I hear you, Mr. Lindsay, you're forty-one and you may not, I, I'm fixing to be thirty-seven and hadn't had kids and I, I hope one day I get to have kids. So there's a lot of people like that had kids that used to be in their twenties, but there are people that have kids into their forties and people who adopt and things like that. So I, I think the, the range could be broader than what we think it is. But I mean, I, I've had people reach out specifically about this policy to HR this summer. So, uh, and, and today in new teacher orientation, somebody asked me about it. So, so people are, are listening to these board meetings. They are paying attention. And, um, I know teachers who, who don't, either can't have kids or not wanting to have kids anymore, they, they would be in support of this policy. Thank you.
Well, I just had a, a question, Mr. Chairman. Is it appropriate at this time to either, if a board member wants these to go on the agenda, otherwise would they need to go to another work session? I, we're kind of just kind of talking through it at this point. I'm not sure any, anyone's decided where they want them to be.
I, I, my assumption was we, all three are going to the meeting and will either be voted up or down at that point. And if we want to readdress it, we can bring it up in a future work session, but I think they do need to be voted on.
Is there any changes to what's been proposed that needs to be made before they go to the final one? Or are they okay as is?
Let's continue. Ms. Parker, you have your line.
Um, I was just curious, on the twenty-seven occurrences, is that just maternity or does that include paternity?
It was both.
It was both?
Okay.
And that's like pretty consistent over.
Yeah, I mean, one year was a little bit higher, one year I think had thirty-four. Like those are the last few, we took like the average of the last, I think, three or four years is what we looked at, so.
Okay, okay. Um. I struggle with this one a little bit, just as, you know, having had a kid, um, a couple, three. Including while I was on the board. Um, but I think. You know, we do have disability, the short-term disability. I mean, I think if we offer that to people and they can plan that way, I think that's one thing. The other thing is, I'm really trying to, when I look at these, really focus on, was, focus on the students. And I think taking care of the, the teachers is a part of that, but I also know as a parent, when I'm going to sign up my kid and I know that I'm starting the school year. And I mean, I had a friend that had it last year. Her, her child didn't have it, did not have her teacher. For the first half of the year because they were out on FMLA. And that's great. And I, I fully support that bonding, but as far as taxpayers paying. And that's great, and I, I fully support that bonding, but as far as taxpayers paying for it, that's the part that I think I'm kind of struggling with. Um, I mean, we all make life decisions and, you know, have to, have to face the consequences for that. I'm just kind of thinking about for the kids not having that teacher in the classroom. And I'll be honest, the first year that you have a kid, those kids get sick all the time. So, it's not like, it's just like, the first nine weeks, they're not there. They're out a lot, potentially, um, with runny noses and, and that, doctor's appointments and things like that, so... It, it's, I don't know, four weeks, I mean, honestly, I don't think four weeks is enough time to bond with your kid, so...
Well, I originally proposed eight, and it got brought down to four.
There you go. I mean, I mean, in my head, I'm thinking six weeks, but at the same time, I'm like, that's a, that's a lot, so, I don't...
I'm all, if you guys want to up it, I, I can definitely make that change, no problem.
But again, I'm trying to balance that out with what's best for our students.
Sure. I, I would say one thing, too, I, I think coming from the employee standpoint of it, um, you're, I feel like employees are gonna show up for you, and they're gonna do a lot more for you if they feel valued, and if they have things taken care of at home. I, I know a lot of times, like, it's, it's really hard to compartmentalize all of our lives and show up, and be there, and be a hundred percent for your kids, if you're worried about something that's going on at your house, or other things are going on. Like, I get it, we all have life going on, like, and I feel like the older we get, the more life goes on. Um, but I think that's just one way to say, it's like, I mean, you're right, is this gonna cover everything? No, but is it, hey, we do appreciate you, please take some time to get things, this is, this is an opportunity? I think it's a good starting point, um, but I, I think it, I just feel like there's a lot of times people will stay for a place that maybe doesn't necessarily, there's lots of different things, but if they have a really good boss, or they feel really supported, they're gonna stay there. Um, so I just think this is one way that we can say, we support you, um, please stay with us.
I think you hit something right on the head right there, because that four weeks after a child is born can become quite a financial burden. And I do think that this is a way that we can work to retain and attract new employees, but it's also a way that, uh, I lost my train of thought. It's a good way to attract new employees and retain the ones we have, just being able to ease that burden. Because I know we went through that, uh, personally, and, um, it does throw you into turmoil. I mean, it really can, and then you may end up having to look for another job, to make those, uh, make up the ground that you lost. So, I, I definitely think that this is a, a strong, a strong point that we need to exercise. Do we offer any kind of pay-for-bereavement leave?
There's, yeah, three days, that's, um, paid leave. Yes, sir.
Speaking as, uh, whether or not I would begrudge anybody, both my parents have passed, I'll never use the bereavement leave for a immediate family member. Uh, actually, that argument doesn't work, never mind. I was going down a path I didn't want to go. All right, anyway, uh, is there any other discussion on this?
I've got one last thing.
Ms. Irvin?
I have a question, and I'm sorry. Um, kind of trying to bridge the gap and thinking through it on the fly, which I know is not good. Um, well, we were talking about like, the four days potentially for the employees that had been here longer, and we do have those right now, how it is in policy, that those would roll over to their sick leave. Doug's gonna love this, I know, but is there a way that that could just accumulate as potential? So like, if somebody later on saved those, and they needed those days for, like, helping with elder care, or something of that nature, like, for parents? I don't know, I mean, to me, if they're days that were granted, would they have to roll to sick?
Well, in that situation, you would still be able to use sick leave, because you're helping take, sick leave is not just for yourself, it's if you're helping take care of somebody as well, so... The, I think the personal leave is kind of different reasons, like, that wouldn't qualify for sick leave. Um, I know some people, for instance, like, they're, you know, that have split homes, and their child is maybe here for the child's spring break, but it's not the same spring break as our teachers, and so then they need to take off that time, but it wouldn't really be sick leave, because they're not so...
So, forgive me, but, and I'm not the best at this, but to me, FMLA, that's where you have to have written documentation from a doctor, and it expresses the need, but then we have employees that are within our system, some even sitting here, that just have to take off a day here and there, to help see that their parents are here and there, are taken care of, to where it would just be like, a day here and there, versus an actual... It's still, it would be sick leave, but so you're saying they wouldn't have to do FMLA, it would just still be sick, okay, never mind. I'm overthinking it as usual. Sorry.
Mr. Lindsay?
One, one last comment on the, uh, local leave. Um, we, we really need to put some thought into this. As we give, i, i, if we give more personal days, you can bet that the day, the Friday before Labor Day is gonna be a very popular day. The, uh, Friday before Thanksgiving will be a very popular day. And to my, in my job, i, i, if I, if I miss one of those days, they don't, they don't find a replacement for me. They don't, they don't have to, th, th, they do without me that day. We have to find a, we have to have somebody to be in these classrooms. Uh, uh, Mr. Sims gave an example a while ago. One time last year, we had to close the school, because we didn't have enough, we didn't have staff to staff it. So, a, as, as we, as we think about this, think about the long-term ramifications of this. Again, we, we entice people to come to work by saying, we will pay you fifty dollars a day for your sick time when you retire, if you don't use it. And the state tells you, we'll give you credit towards your tenure if you don't use it. So, so we, we, we have two ways we entice people to not work, but we're talking about a policy where we're gonna entice people to take off. So those two policies contradict each other.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Sims?
I was hoping to have the last word, but I think there's another one.
Hang on, first.
Okay. First of all, there's a law that says you can't, ten percent of your staff can't be out, a principal can deny that leave. So it's really up to the principal to say, I mean, it, that's, that's the law. If they ask for a personal day, and there's already, that, that, you...
They just don't show up, they call in sick that morning. They don't take the personal day.
Well, then, they can ask for a doctor's certificate, because they, that means you're out, okay.
They can.
Uh, Mr. How?
So, I, I understand that we closed the school because we just didn't have staff, um, but that was last year, when we did not have, at minimum, right now, we have two hundred and ten substitutes signed up to go. Two hundred and ten. We, we have nine hundred teachers. That's a lot of teachers that could potentially be out, and we still have coverage. That is not ideal, that is not what we want, and that's not, I don't think that's what our teachers want. But, I mean, I understand every argument, but once again, we sat here during a salary study, and we talked about benefits, and we talked about various strategies and various ways that we wanted to try to offer to keep teachers, to hire teachers, to re, to recruit teachers, and at no point during that whole discussion did we really ask teachers what they wanted. This is from collaborative conferencing, this is, this is a direct result of teachers having input saying, this is some of the things that we think we'd like to have. So, I mean, like, I, I, we have to do what's best for students, but what's best for students is to have consistency, to have a teacher that's certified. And life happens to teachers, life happens to everyone in this room, things change. You don't, you don't plan for things, you can't plan for the heart attack, you can't plan, you can plan for a child, you don't always plan for a child, so you don't know, oh, I need to, I need to sign up for a short-term disability, because I'm, I don't know when I'm gonna have that child. So, I, we just need to make sure that our teachers feel like they're supported, feel like they're appreciated, and this is a direct result of what they have said they would like to have. So, I, I mean, why would we ignore what our teachers say? This is, this is what we're asking for. So, thank you.
All right, appreciate all the comments and the, uh, discussion on this. I'm assuming we're not gonna put it on the consent agenda. Um, that brings us to the end of our agenda. I, I want to just give an update, this is more of an FYI than anything else. Um, I've been going to an awful lot of planning commission meetings lately, and I will say that the reason for that is it kept getting mentioned that the schools aren't providing any input on these new developments. And I, I quite frankly, took offense to that. I will say that I had some very constructive conversations this afternoon with, uh, Chairman Goats of the Planning Commission, and we've discussed kind of what information from the school board would be appropriate, because what they're asking from us now is, is of no benefit to them, or for us to provide it, quite frankly. So we've had some really good conversations with the, uh, City of Columbia Planning Commission, and I look forward to working, in fact, I need to talk to you about this later on. Uh, just wanted to let you know that that's, that's going in a good direction, and we are experiencing tremendous growth, which is not a surprise to anybody, but we're also doing our part to be proactive and forward-looking to help in that process. So, thank you all for allowing me to do that. And with that, I think we are, have a light on.
No, ju, just a comment to that, um, I didn't ask anybody's permission, I just did it, but that, I, I went to City of Mount Pleasant, uh, planning commission meeting last Tuesday, and kind of spoke on behalf of the school system, and just gave a pretty generic answer that, you know, every home that gets approved, every, uh, development that gets appro, that gets approved, we're this much closer to having to build another building, and we're this much closer to having to hire more staff. And, and there's no, and, and I said that night, there's, there's, we don't have an equation that says for every house, we're getting this, and, um, you know, five hundred homes may equal two hundred kids, or it, it may equal fifteen hundred kids. Well, I mean, we don't know, uh, so I, I think so, some of the information they're asking of us is unrealistic. Um, but, I mean, that, because we, we don't know when these, in these new developments, um, are older people moving in, or younger people, what it may be, but, um, but I did try to, as well, try to speak on behalf, uh, Mr. Wolver was there in another capacity, and I, I don't think I did anything illegal, he didn't jump up and tackle me, so... But, uh, uh, but yeah, I hope, um, I, I think that's kind of our role to be the voice for the school system.
Well, and I will say, the one thing, talking about legal, legality of all this, I do, before I address any of these divisions or planning groups, make the statement that the school board has no favorable opinion or negative opinion of these developments. We're only here to provide information. So, uh, I do try to keep that, just so it doesn't look like we're trying to push one or the other. Uh, Ms. Irvin, your last light on.
Yes, and I'm sorry, but I was just sitting here looking through what is normally like our, I hate to say our nothings, but kind of like our final ups, but COVID is listed there, why? Is that just an FYI, is that a continuation of last year, or is that...
I believe that's what, uh, Ms. Ventura sent out.
Okay.
Email to me about that, yes.
Okay.
All right, so with that, uh, that said, enjoy your evening. Thank you all for being here and being so, uh, attentive.